Um, welcome. I'll read this script. Um, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. All committee members and student reps, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elizabeth Alvota?
Yes.
Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Here.
Um, Annie, I'm not sure how to say her last name.
But hold on, she's.
Nope. Um, staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade?
Here.
Jeff Frante?
Here.
Charles Gabron?
Here.
Um, Brian Haas?
Here.
Wayne White?
Here.
Um, Chuck Caragennis?
Here.
Mike Barth?
Here.
And Rob Rulo?
Here.
Okay, am I missing anybody? Okay. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely is allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on June 16th, 2021, an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The new law has two major parts. First, the new law allows public bodies to continue providing live adequate alternative means of public access. Uh oh, I just lost that. Um, sorry. Um, I guess when somebody comes into the meeting, it may. Um, sorry. Second, the new law authorizes all members of a public body to continue participating in meetings remotely. Open meeting laws requirement that a quorum of the body and the chair be physically present at the meeting location remains suspended. All other provisions of open meeting law and regulations such as the requirements regarding posting notice of meetings and creating and maintaining accurate meeting minutes remain in effect. Public bodies are reminded that notice of all meetings must be posted at least 48 hours in advance, not including weekends and holidays, and the meeting notice must clearly specify how the public may access the meeting, whether in person, remote, or both. This committee is convening by Zoom video conferences posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees or all attendees are participating via video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please let the chair know if you are recording or broadcasting this meeting prior to doing so. Use the raise your hand function now if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting so I can make note of it. Okay. Um, most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2021-2022 Agendas under the tab Agendas under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to commentsforscmeeting@maynard.k12.ma.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up until the citizens' comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. To ensure that your statement is read in its entirety, a 350-word limit is suggested. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark in the interest of time, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. Comments are limited to three words or 300, three minutes or 350 words to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. The chair will read only one statement from each citizen, however, citizens can submit any additional comments for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the citizens' comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of citizens' comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the speaker concludes their remarks, I will ask each member in turn if they have a single comment, question, or motion that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off on speaking until your name is called, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please do not interrupt anyone who is speaking and cease speaking if the chair requests you to do so. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Um, okay, to start, I believe we need to make a roll call to come to order. Um, so, Mary Brantley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yes.
Elizabeth Alvota?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths, yes. Okay. Um. So the first thing is citizens' comments, but I didn't see any. Um, no, there's still not any?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Um, urgent business?
We don't have any urgent business tonight.
Okay, so student representative report. Um, I'll turn it over to you, Annie.
Hello, everyone. I just have a few updates from the school. Um, so, right now, we have a lot of different drives running for charity. Um, we have, we just wrapped up two food drives, one run by the student council and one run by Project 351. So those just wrapped up. Um, we have a book drive running right now by a club. Um, and they have boxes available at all three schools. And we are also just about to be in the toy drive next week. Um, and that is going to be primarily at the high school. Um, band concerts are going to be, I believe, the course one is going to be before Christmas break, and the band concert is going to be December 27th. And.
Um, hang on one second.
And the purchase for COVID and things like that. Um, uh, theater is starting up again. The yearly production, um, is going to be into the woods. And so, audiences are being held today and tomorrow for that. So hopefully we go well. Oh, no.
Oh, um, I think you're frozen. Um, Principal Caragennis, do you want to say something while she's frozen, or do you need, um, or do you need her to be able to hear?
Um, I, oh, I saw some there.
Yeah.
I know she had been mentioning, go ahead, Annie.
Oh, she's muted again.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Um, I was talking about, um, we were going, we're going to start basketball and indoor track season. Um, they just opened indoor tracks at our school, so that will be interesting to see how that plays. And basketball is starting as well, so that's exciting. Um, but the main thing that's going on at the high school is the Santa telethon, um, which is happening this weekend. Um, so, the radio programs are in full swing, and they are in need of auction and monetary donations. Um, everything will go to families in need in the community. Um, and so, the WAVM program has been working hard this week, and it's running this weekend. If anybody is tuning in, be sure to check that out. That is all my updates this week.
Thank you. Um, is there anything you guys need from us?
Jeff?
Thank you. Um, I had no specific concerns.
All right, thank you. Um, Brian?
I think they need donations from the school committee for their telethon. She forgot to mention that.
Yes, we've already taken care of that, and I will be there to present a check tomorrow night promptly at seven.
Airing.
And how do people tune in?
Um, I'm not actually sure of that. I'm not in the WAVM myself. Um, but I don't know if anybody else knows that, but I think it's, it's, I think it might be broadcast on like the public television stand. I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Um, there's usually, Hillary, sorry, there's usually a link on the WAVM page that takes you right to the, and I see Chuck nodding, so I'm assuming that that is probably the best way to do it.
And it's streamed live, yep.
Awesome. Um, does anyone else have any questions for Annie? Jeff? Okay, can you unmute Jeff?
Nice shirt, Jeff.
Thank you. The class of 2023 had their powder puff. And in speaking with Jamie and Bethany, it sounds like at least a third of the school was involved. So I told them I'd give them a shout out and wear the shirt that kind of makes me look like a large piece of wedding cake, but that's okay. That's okay.
Good luck.
Hillary, oh, can I just make a, do a shout out if I could?
Definitely.
Okay, um, so, um, Annie had mentioned the food drives that were going, so I just wanted to let everybody know that the Project 351, um, did the food drive for the Maynard Food Pantry, which was great. And it also reminded me that one of our 10th graders, um, who is a Project 351 alumni, was just chosen as one of, I think it's 35 students in, um, in the whole state to be part of the alumni. It's like a mentoring program. It's Lily Wogus Beck.
Oh.
I just wanted to do the shout out because it was quite, it's quite an honor for her, for the town. Uh, it's amazing organization, so, um, yeah, she's worked really hard for it, as well as the other, everybody else that's part of Project 351. And for those of you who don't know, Project 351, it's called 351 because there's 351, um, school systems in Massachusetts. So there's a representative from each one of the, um, school systems. So, that's it.
Awesome. Um, okay, um, thank you for coming, Annie, and, um, you can stay if you, um, want to hear about MCAS results and our budget, or you can, um, leave and do more important things for you. Um, but thank you so much for coming and joining and sharing. Um, we appreciate it. Um, okay. Thank you. Um, so the next topic is the MCAS presentation.
Okay, I know Colleen will be doing the slides for us. Um, while she's bringing that up, I just want to add that, um, we have a brand-new DECA team at Maynard High School starting for the first time this year, and they had their regional competition. This is the first time we formed, the first time they've competed. And three of our students in the regionals placed in the top five in their categories, which qualifies them to go on to the state competition.
Jeff, can you remind us what DECA is?
It's a, it's a business-oriented, uh, club activity that's actually statewide.
What it stands for, sorry.
On the top of my head, I need to look it up.
Okay, never mind, sorry.
Nope, um, but I'll have the answer for you shortly. Uh, and, um, the students, um, will now complete, compete in the state, and I think I even have the names of who did that, if you give me a second. Uh, we have Aiden Donahue in fifth place and Principals of Finance. This is out of 700 competitors in the various categories. Uh, Liam Llewellyn, third place in Principals of Business Administration. And Jack Dunton played fifth, fifth in entrepreneur, in the entrepreneurship competition. So, um, we're very pleased this club literally has formed within the last, uh, month or so. Um, Emily Policki, one of our teachers, agreed to, um, be the faculty advisor, and, um, they're already doing really well. So I just wanted to, um, mention that before we get into the MCAS presentation. Um, so.
Chuck, can I add on to that?
Yep.
Um, and the Maynard Education Foundation, um, provided the funding to get, um, to get the group going. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Yep, it, it's just, uh, and we can't thank you enough. Um, so, the MEF really came through, and the students raised some money as well. Uh, so it's just been a very healthy cooperative venture, and, uh, we're just really pleased to have it up and underway. So, um, on to MCAS data. Uh, this is the fall update. Um, I'm going to be joined by Mike Barth from the Fowler and Rob Rulo from the Green Meadow. Uh, we have some slides we'd like to go through with you, and, uh, we'll be taking turns at various points in time. So I'll be getting started with the next slide. Um, so, analysis of MCAS scores is something we do in all of the Maynard Public Schools. It's a way to see how we're doing internally year to year. It's a way to see how we're doing against similar communities. It's a way to see how we're doing against the state. Um, MCAS tests at the high school level are in English, math, and science. Um, and part of this is to help ensure a superior academic experience by making sure we're on track in key subject areas. And we also use the information gathered to develop supports for students who might need, um, a, uh, additional, uh, instruction or additional emotional support in order to be successful academically. So it not only lets us see our standing, but it also points us in the direction of the sorts of supports we need to offer. Um, and the next slide. Um, the data we get from the spring 2021 MCAS data, along with previous years, helps us target achievement gaps with various groups of students. We also use other data sources. Um, tonight, we're focusing on MCAS, but, for example, at the high school, we might look at how students are doing on, in IXL assignments in math, or we recently received our PSAT data. Um, so we, we look at a variety of metrics to try to, uh, uh, target, um, achievement gaps that we would like to work on. Um, just a couple of things before handing the next couple of slides over to Mike Barth. Um, I'd be very, I, I think there's a need to be wary about the 2021 MCAS data. Um, the testing conditions were not identical school to school. Um, some students were opting out, even though they weren't supposed to, um, in various schools. So the, um, uniformity of participation across districts was not nearly the same as it is in typical years. Um, also, the MCAS data, uh, if you look at it year to year, you have to remember it's not the same group of students each year. It's a different group of students each year. But, uh, with COVID and the nature of how the tests were administered last year, I think the, there should be some wariness with the scores. I'd also remind the members watching and, you know, committee members and people watching that the state went to a new MCAS format, um, in a new instrument of measure essentially in 2021. So although the state claims that the data lines up, I'm just going to say publicly, that's a bunch of baloney. Uh, the, uh, the instruments are quite different. The state noted market differences in scoring from one instrument to the other. So there's all, there's a lot of caveats to go with the MCAS data, um, over the, this past year. And then we skipped a year and then the years before that. So I'll turn it over to Mike at this point, and, uh, I'll be back a little later on.
All right, thanks, Chuck, and thanks, Colleen. Um, this slide is to share a little background information. You can read it, um, in its entirety, uh, but in, in essence, to sum it up, um, I bolded the challenge in and inequity are understatements in the MCAS last year. Um, as Chuck stated, we had, um, a significant number, percentage of students take the test at home, uh, in, uh, an honor system. And we also, um, had many students, uh, unprecedented, I've never seen anything like it, uh, students who opted out, um, which, as Chuck, I think, alluded to, is only an unofficial, uh, thing that a parent or child can do. Um, and if there is no official opt-out, um, all students are required to take the MCAS in grades three through eight, and again, in, in high school. Um, you cannot, uh, open up a website and opt out of it, or tell your principal you want to opt out. By opting out, what you're saying is I'm not taking it, and I'll get the zero, and the zero will count against the school as well. Um, but for many good reasons, parents and kids had to do that, uh, last year. I mean, I don't want to discount that. Um, it just made the data, uh, as Chuck said, be needed to be put into that context. Also, um, just looking at the overall arc of this pandemic, you see that many students have parents at home that can like drop everything in the evening, sit next to their kids, help them do their homework, help them do their, their studies, make sure they're on their Zooms, um, during, during, when we were in remote learning. And other parents are at work and working, you know, days, nights, and, um, are not able, maybe don't have great Wi-Fi, maybe don't have great technology at home. Um, so, of course, by, by learning having to go remote, it, it greatly exacerbated inequalities amongst our, um, our families. Um, so I just wanted to kind of give you that background, but we did have 94% of students in grades, grade two through eight and 10, take the MCAS. Um, so, uh, at, uh, like Chuck said, at, uh, at, at, um, Green Meadow, they take the MCAS in grade three only, and then Fowler's grades four through eight, and then in the high school, the, the students take it in, um, ELA, Math and Science. Next slide. Um, we broadly share three recommendations with this data, things that we are currently and actively doing in all three schools. One is sharing out the data, uh, broadly with all staff. Um, and then have staff actually, and I'm sort of taking the one and skipping to the last one, which is the regular analysis and have, in, in CPTs, in data meetings. Um, CPT stands for, uh, Common Planning Time, when teachers have off together and they meet in teams. Um, they analyze that data with, um, the help of different, uh, either our MTSS coaches or myself. And that, what they're doing is building capacity so that once our MTSS funding runs out, that our teachers have a better capacity to do this work, uh, more independently. And in the middle recommendation, it's that we really need to re, re-start the professional development, development committee. That's also in process with, um, postings that have gone out today to solicit faculty to participate on that. So, uh, our professional development, development committee will work to, um, design and invite in or design themselves, uh, professional development that will support, um, our students improving their, uh, MCAS performance. Next. And I know that, uh, Mr. Rulo is going to take over from here.
All right, Mike, thank you very much. Um, so as Mike said, is we've taken a look at our professional development committees, data analysis teams. With that comes a, some possibility of budget implications that may have to take place. Um, once the teams come together, we want to make sure that once the professional element is identified, that we may also need district funds in order to process that professional development. Um, that's basically what this, this, uh, provides, or this slide is, is. And, um, once, we, we will take care of that, but we are working hard on that professional development team, and we look forward to moving forward to that. Colleen, next slide. The statement of impact is, uh, after the professional development team and the data analysis takes place, what are those specifically Lincoln areas that are identified? And what are the areas that need to be strengthened by the professional development? And then how can we deliver those? Um, it is anticipated that that system will support our teachers in our tier ones, tier twos, and instruction, and in those areas and techniques that are needed in order to work best for students. There is the idea of any policy implications that may take place. Um, although we don't see any potential policy implication as a result of these proposed or proposed recommendations, uh, we just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that, and it is, the process is consistent with our data analysis and our building level. Um, and the professional note will be linked to that data. Uh, that brings me to the area of the Green Meadow Elementary School. There's just actually three aspects of this. We're looking at the MCAS of 2019, and then that, uh, year was 2021, and whatever conclusions we have in our next steps. I look at the areas of our ELA, and this is what that one is. I just want you to focus on, um, the percentages of, in 2019, 4% of the students were exceeded, and 8% exceeded in 2021. When you bring that to numbers, um, because we, we have a shorter number of students, that was four students in 2019 and seven students in 21. We, comparative to the state, we were a little below in 2019. They were there 10%, we were 4%, but, uh, we were at 8%, they were at 9% in 2021. Our meeting that takes place is, Green Meadow went from, uh, 42% to 53% from 2019 to 2021. And then the state had actually dropped from 46% to 41% as an overall between the two exceeding in meeting. Um, in 2021, we're at 61%, and the state is at 50%. Next slide. In the areas of mathematics, mathematics in 2019 was pretty much on target with the state, um, where we had primarily between meeting and, and exceeding 44%. The state had 45%. Um, and, and 2021, we had a fund, there was a drop in mathematics. We were at 22% between meeting and exceeding, while the state was at 33%. Um, our partially meeting and our not meeting in 2019, um, the, take a look at the not meeting is, in 2019, it was 8% and it grew to 24%, but also take a look at the state. The state was at 13% and grew to 26%. I want to note that, and I made a mention earlier, and I know that Chuck did the same thing, is it was, um, in, in most administrative eyes, there was an issue with the mathematics MCAS overall. So just take a look at it as, if the state is going up by 20, in 26% of the students in third grade, and the state are failing, we might want to take a look at the, at the overall, the literally of the test. in third grade and the state are failing, we might want to take a look at the at the overall, the literally of the test. Next slide. My conclusions for ELA, as I stated, is that meeting exceeding increase from 46 to 61% in the LA. And in the categories of not meeting or partially meaning that we decrease from 55 to 39%, which is also a good thing. In our state comparison is the percentage of scoring in the categories meeting exceeding for 2021. GMS was at 61%, while the state was at 50. And then in the partially not meeting or partially meeting, we're at 39%. The state was at 49%. So overall, in that category in 2021, we did well in the LA. Excellent. In mathematics is it seems like we along with the state all had a difficulty. The overall student scoring in the category of meeting exceeding, we went from 44% to 22% from 2019 to 2021. And but the increase of partially not meeting went from 54 to 79. The state comparison is GMS again with meeting exceeding with 2021. We were at 22% and the state was at 33. Impartially not meeting, we were at 79 and the state was at 66%. Next steps. We have implemented our data meetings, we with our teachers, we strategically target skill gaps and build capacity for the teachers. We have three MTSS teachers who are leading data collection, tier two and three instruction. We are focusing on our tier one and two instruction and especially in the areas in literacy, phonemic awareness, phonics, reading and writing. And we are creating a professional development plan from all the way from 2020, 2021, 2023. We also have a BBST, which is very active in an institute support for referred students. In the areas of mathematics is we have implemented schoolwide math assessment. This year, we are examining our grade level curriculum maps. And then in 2022, we will begin the process of assessing our current math program, which happens to be Go Math. And I turn that back over to Mike Barth.
All right, I want some brownie points for the prettiest slide here. Colleen, you can skip the slide. All right, so just to get down to some down and dirty data, we had 96% participation. About 10% of the students took the MCAS at home. We had 4% opt out. And typically, we have 100%. I am militant when I try to get all the students who've been absent and whatnot to take the MCAS. So I'm very good at that and we have 100%, but not last year. Next slide. So these slides just give you a high level of our growth and our performance. You can see the first row says Maynard and we had 38.4% growth. Underneath that, you can compare that to the state, which had 35.8. This is for ELA, this slide and we'll do math and we'll do math on the next slide and then science. And our percent meeting or exceeding expectations or what you might say is passing the MCAS. There is no passing when when you're talking about grades three through eight. You're only talking about passing when you get to 10th grade. But a percent meeting or exceeding expectations is 47% and the state was 46. Similar similar scores. In math, which is where I'm going to mainly focus, is you can see that our growth was 32.5, the state was 30 and percent meeting exceeding was 38% versus the state being 33%. Next slide. And our passing rates in 2021 versus prior years. This was what I really wanted to look at, given this pandemic, given the fact that students hadn't taken MCAS in 2021 or 2020, excuse me, had not taken MCAS. So one thing I'd like to point out that's a little bit off topic of this slide is that fourth graders had never taken MCAS before. That was their first time to take it because they never took it when they're in third grade. But our percent passing ELA, 87% was, you know, compared to 91 in 2019, 91 in 2018, a difference of 4%, not a huge hit. I highlighted the math row in yellow because our our percent was was very different. We only had 80% meeting or exceeding expectations. And in 2019, we had 90%. In 2018, we had 87%. So we took a 10-point dip in that. And in science, we were similar again, kind of a little bit like ELA, took a little hit, but not a huge hit. And interestingly, if you look at 2018, there's actually good improvement. There was a, there was a fair amount of looking at the science data with some surprise when the scores came out that that our students did pretty well on on science, which is, which is a nice thing to see. With math, if you want to go to the next side, slide, Colleen. We're going to, so with math and then I'll I'll talk a little bit about high needs. Math, as you know, is extremely topical. You're learning very, very specific skills that you need to understand in order to move on to the next skill or the next concept. Whereas in ELA, students are always learning about character traits. Students are always learning about themes and things like that. There's really about 10 ELA overarching standards that just get more complicated as the as the years go on. But a third grader is reading a story and being asked to think about how the characters developed and changed and what they might do next, just as an eighth grader or a 10th grader might be doing that. But with math, when you're not sure how to factor a polynomial, it's very difficult then to move on to the the skill that might come after that. So because, you know, our theory is that because so many students missed varying amounts of of school over the remote portion of the pandemic in 20 and 21, it really exacerbated the the gap that the students would have between how they, the, you know, prior year would have done. So we did take a a pretty major dip with math. But where are you going to see the biggest glaring differences in our data is looking at our high need students. Again, this isn't going to come as a surprise, but the state has a a category for what's called high need students. The state has, you know, codified this in the regulations and they they give us data just for our high need students and also our, all of the rest of our, all of all of our students. And a high need student is a student who is either an ELL student or a formerly ELL student. So that student could have flipped out, but but they're still in the high needs group if they've if they were formerly ELL. And if a student has an IEP and and these are all ors, by the way, so ELL or IEP or economically disadvantaged. And as you know, many students are in two or more of those categories just for that single student. So those are ors there that are our high needs group. And if you want to move on, Colleen. So with, this slide really captures the essence of what I'd like to share tonight, which is to go back to our 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 sort of passing rate of ELA. You have a 95% non-high needs. If you look at that top row, 95% non-high needs, that means the student is not ELL. They're not, they don't have an IEP and they don't, they're not economically disadvantaged. 95% of those students passed the ELA MCAS 92 for math, 98 for science. But our Fowler high needs were only 80%, 62 and 78. Again, I probably should have highlighted that math row in yellow. You can see that 62 versus 92% is a 30-point swing in the in the percentage points of students who were able to access that test well enough to pass it versus students that weren't. And just to kind of couch our data within how the state did with high needs, I put the high state high needs next to the Fowler. So you can see, you know, 80 versus 73, we did a little bit better. 62 to 64, about the same, a little worse. And 78 versus 70, we did a little better. But you can see that the the gaps between high needs and non-high needs are 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 very wide. Next slide. So our conclusion is that our high need students were impacted most by the pandemic. And I believe that's where the the most inequalities existed with students needing to learn from home and receive support from home. And our overall performance and growth were on par essentially with state averages last spring. We are, I mean, rocking and rolling with data meetings, running intervention groups. Meg Sullivan and Lauren Junta are our two MTSS teachers who are, you know, every day they come in like their hair is on fire. And and also helping to build capacity of the grade level teams to be able to take on this data analysis more independently and to understand the data better. We we feel like a rising tide lifts all boats. I love that quote. I think I've heard Jeff use that quote before. And so we're really focused on our strengthening our tier one and two instruction and looking at our, building our procedures in our protocols to look at curriculum and and, you know, adapt it to what our students need and to make sure that all of our students, you know, in the classes can sort of be met where they are and help move forward. That's a huge source of frustration this year with teachers is just understanding how wide the the variability of their classroom of students is. 20 students in a room, some students are just needing like a high level of enrichment. And another student might say, and I actually heard this this year in a, I can't remember, it was fifth or sixth grade, a student asked their teacher why there was a period in the middle of their number. That period, of course, wasn't a period, it was a decimal point. And so to 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 talk about how students are, were behind because of this pandemic is almost an understatement. It's very, very difficult for teachers to understand how to meet that child where they are and move them forward when every day you kind of have to come in and teach a grade level lesson. So that's been the focus of our work this year is really understanding that variability and how to how to tackle that the best that we can. Next slide. And now we'll turn it over to Mr. Karagina. Chuck, you're muted.
Okay, um, thank you. I'd just like to point out that two days ago, we celebrated the eighth anniversary of the dedication of Maynard High School. So Maynard High School is now officially eight years old. And I also want to let you know that DECA stands for Distributive Education Clubs of America. And it's a business organization that hosts conferences and business competitions for high schools across Massachusetts. So getting a little bit of that business done. I'd like to move forward to the Maynard High School slides. Well, you're at the very last slide there, Colleen, if you could go back to the photo of Maynard High. And there we go. Okay, um, our MCAS ELA data for 2021 is the first thing they have. I think you'll notice that we did slightly better than the state for all students. And we were fairly comparable to the state with high need students. But the item I'd like to point out is the participation rate. At Maynard High School, we had 96% of all our students take the MCAS test. Statewide, it was 90%, which is a pretty big difference. Also, we had 91% of our high needs students take the test, whereas statewide, it was 84%. The reason I really want to point this out is if you think about it intuitively, students who opt not to take the MCAS test last year, I would I would argue, if you think you're going to do pretty well on the MCAS test and you are going to show up and take it. If you're not as convinced you're going to do as well on the MCAS test, you may just skip it altogether. So not only are our rates comparable or slightly higher for all students and fairly comparable for high need students, we're doing it with a much higher percentage of the population. So although we certainly see that there's a substantial gap between high need students and other students, again, looking at it compared to the state, we're holding our own and we certainly know that we need, we we need to support our high need students more than than we have been thus far. If we could look at the next slide, we see that in 2019, we were for all students exceeding the state by a small amount, actually a moderate amount. But our high need students were maybe just a hair below what the state was doing with high need students. But the bigger news again is the gap between all students and the high need students. And just to reiterate what Mike said, high need students are defined as students who are English language learners on education plans or are of low socioeconomic status. We did not break the categories out individually here because at the high school, when you talk about, for example, the EL population, we only have a very small number of students taking the MCAS test. You reach the point where you could almost identify the students by name if you break the categories out further. So we we really wanted to keep them together so the student anonymity would be intact as well. And in 2018, you can see that we were lagging the state in advanced. And the same was true with our high need students. Again, fairly comparable to the state. In 2018, we had no students of any category fail the English MCAS. But we would like to see a general shift upward with proficient moving more into advanced and in particular. So again, we see the gap between high needs and all students. And we really in 2018, we're looking at moving the proficient numbers toward advanced and the needs improvement toward proficient. And without going back to the other slides, that that actually has occurred through some writing initiatives that we did over the past few years, particularly before COVID hit, we had concentrated on writing and had seen a very nice jump in our academic scores. So in terms of ELA, we're holding our own with the big news being the difference between all students and and high need students. And now we'll move into the math scores and science scores after that. In 2021, again, you'll see our participation rates are higher than the state on the math MCAS. You'll see that 61% of our students were in meeting or exceeding, the state it was 62%. Not meeting, we were 9%, the state was 12. But in the high needs category, you see that we had no students exceeding and quite a few not meeting. And I think this for us was the was one of the big takeaways looking at the data is our high need students in math in particular are are really in need of a lot of additional support coming out of COVID. If we could take a look at the earlier years. In 2019, you'll see that we were actually quite comparable to the state with all students, but lagging the state with our high need students. And in 2018, the year before, you'll see that again, we that it's our high need students that are most in need of support. So the fact that in 2021, our high need students came closer to the state is a little bit of a heartening trend. But really, our takeaway is that our high need students in math are most definitely in need of additional support at this point in time. And on to the science results. We have all three years here comparing MHS to the state for all students and high need students. I think you'll notice that our numbers improved dramatically over the three-year period. We went from lagging the state in advanced in all categories, both all students and high need students to really beating the state in some years in that category. Our proficient numbers went way up. Our needs improvement numbers were much better. And our failing rates declined substantially. I think this can be attributed to a couple of things. We had a staffing change for our freshman physics instruction. And we're very pleased with the teacher that we have now, Mr. Malaxos. We've seen a big jump in our MCAS scores. Also, even during COVID over the last couple of years, Mr. Malaxos really had his, like, you just can't do labs when you're at home in the way you can do a lab in school, obviously. But Mr. Malaxos was able to engage the students through demonstrations and through written work to keep the course fairly rigorous, even though we couldn't do those in-person labs. And we're very pleased to see the improvement in our science scores over the last few years since he's been on board. So I do want to give a shout out to the science scores actually climbing and to Mr. Malaxos in that regard. Next slide. I just want to give you a sense of the attendance rates that we've seen last year. You'll notice that in terms of all students, we exceeded the state in terms of attendance, we really worked at attendance. Our high need students were comparable to the state. And again, even our attendance rates point to the need for us to really work intensely with our, our high need students on moving forward. So, the, the attendance rates are, are something that we watch very carefully. We've started to do home visits over the last couple of years. We send folks out to try to ascertain why students aren't coming to school. We've increased the number of parent meetings that we have. And we are working really hard to do that just essential thing, which is get students into school. Next slide. And you'll see that in previous years, we, we were consistently in the nineties to mid nineties for attendance and it fell into the high eighties in, in COVID years. So, that's, that's noteworthy. And finally, to conclusions for the high school. We know that we had declines in attendance and in MCAS scores, particularly among our high need students. And we've documented that. This is especially true in mathematics. And I do want to point out that what we've seen is mirrored across the state. It's also mirrored in similar communities to ours. I am happy to mention again that silver lining, a notable exception has been our growth in science scores. So even in the midst of all of that, we, we were able to make some improvements in an area we needed to improve in based on data analysis from previous years. In response to what we saw last year, over the summer, we put in place a credit recovery program. We put in place an enrichment program. We have a robust building-based support team identifying students in need of support. And we've put in place a Saturday school program where even this year, within the first few weeks of the school year, students we saw falling behind, we identified and we were getting interventions in the form of additional instruction by the end of September that, that had begun. So we are actively working to identify the students in need of support and getting them that academic support. Going forward, we intend to do additional data analysis and work that into professional development. And we want to more, even more effectively track students who are struggling. And we want to fill those learning gaps in. I think one of the things we're getting from looking at the data more carefully is we are identifying students very rapidly who are falling behind. And we're identifying specifically the area they need help and we really are trying to, to, to get them that assistance right away. And the final slide. These are overall conclusions for all three schools. We know the past school years, two school years have been very challenging for everyone in the Maynard Public Schools community. That includes our families. The staff members, everyone has had great challenges over the last couple of years. Our students and families most in need of support. Our high needs families have been particularly stressed due to the impact of the pandemic. But through it all, our staff, I can speak for my building and I know Mike and Rob speak passionately for their buildings. Our staff members have worked incredibly hard the last couple of years. A lot of our staff members have children there themselves and they were doing their instruction every day when we were remote, even as they were trying to handle their own kids' instruction at home. And they've, they've really risen to the task. So I, I want to commend them for the efforts they've made. Our scores have dipped in MCAS, but they're not disastrous and irreversible drops. Our attendance rates are down, they're down four or five percent, they're already rebounding this year. And we're working very hard to get students into school. We want to continue using data to monitor our academic performance. We're monitoring attendance rates carefully. And we are surveying students and their families to get a sense of their social and emotional state. So we can develop strategies to help those families and students as well and get them back on track in every way possible. So, we know what our mission is. It's to fill these gaps, it's to support the families and we intend to do that. So, thank you very much. And at this point, the three principals are open for questions.
Hillary is muted. Actually, Elizabeth is too.
Hi, sorry. Um, so one question I had is if people want to go around and do, I know we talked about with Dorothy about going around and doing clarifying questions first and then discussion questions. And I didn't know if people are interested in that or if everyone wants to just go around once and cover everything.
Your chair, it's up to you.
I'm open to whatever anyone wants.
I like your rounds. I think it makes sense to do that, that way.
Okay. Lydia, you want to go first?
I have no clarifying questions.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, I have a couple. First of all, the BBST is that Building Based Student Team?
Support team.
Support team. Okay.
It's a group of teachers, counselors, they get together at each building along with administrators. Teachers can refer students who are particularly struggling and the team tries to develop working with the staff members and the students and their families ultimately work on developing plans to get the students caught up.
And, and another thing that BBST does is it ensures that there's careful tracking of data before a student is referred for evaluation by Special Education Department. So you try, you try out different strategies with that student that are non-special ed, that are regular ed strategies. And then if they don't work, that's a data for the Special Education Department as a student might then be referred for an evaluation.
Thank you so much. And then the, the GM slide that mentioned the math assessment as data discovery tool, and I was wondering what assessment that is that you were thinking of using?
Say that again, I apologize, Elizabeth.
Sorry, yeah, there was a, it's mentioned at the end of the next steps slide for GM that there was going to be a math assessment as data discovery tool. I'm just wondering what.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't indicated a, a system-wide math one at this point. That's something we're talking about with our Title I team at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
I have no clarifying questions.
Natasha?
I did have a couple of clarifying questions. One, the, the Green Meadow presentation, but that, that's really the third grade for last year, right? That's only representative of the one, because they're the ones taking, so that's the current fourth grade. But it's only the third grade. That, that take that, correct?
Correct, Natasha, yes.
Okay. And I guess I just was wondering if there is also consideration with, besides COVID, that grade has also had other impact to interruptions in their education that are more Maynard specific. That I, I wonder if that has, you know, with moving around, spesso's and all that stuff, if that has also been thought as factored into. So I mean, I guess they're in fourth grade now, so it would be more up visible at the in Fowler at this point, but I didn't know if that had been a discussion point.
It was Natasha, and we looked at everything from, as you said, some of the issues that are taking place. We went back all the way down to first grade, that some, many of these students had their education had been interrupted all the way since first grade. And, and the decline and what that might have done. For us, when we look at the MCAS, you know, you look internally and you see where the areas are, and then you look towards a state and see as a comparison. So, yes, it was. And now we work in collaboration with Mike and continue to have conversations between all the schools about how we're going to move forward.
And just another just distinction, I know that it's a really hard time to assess at that point, I know the numbers are, but generally speaking, how MCAS does impact is relating to charter school caps. And from, from a larger perspective, if you, if the district falls in a lower ten percent of the statewide assessment for MCAS, then, then sometimes we could get more assessed, the tuition, that gap is, is allowed more. So I just wanted to clarify that and just point, so although it is a student hard measure, but it does have larger financial impact in, in the net school spending. So it is something that we always, and I think that with, with COVID, they have paused which years they're factoring in for that. I think it's not going to start again. They're, I think they're relying on older, maybe twenty or nineteen numbers, but at some point it would be probably helpful to look and see when they are going to be using those scores again to impact what that cap will be for, for towns.
Yeah, I think there, I think that's going to possibly be soon. I don't know about that specific issue that you mentioned, Natasha, but I want to point out that today, principals and, and superintendents received an email that our, that our district accountability measures and our, our targets have been posted into our, our security Dropbox. It's a thing that we can log into to grab data. And so I went in there and grabbed it and I was able to see that, you know, schools are once again going to be accountable or on the hook for making progress in ELA math, science, also with all the subgroups such as not only high needs, but, you know, African-American slash black, Hispanic slash Latino, all of our, you know, and then the, the actual things that comprise high needs broken out like low income, ELL, special education. So all of those things now have targets for us where they went away for, from that for about a year. So I think goal, targets for schools is coming back up.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor back, Hillary. I have other questions, but I'll wait.
My clarifying questions are, I know at the beginning you mentioned the instrument of measure has changed. But I'm having trouble guessing what that really means. Can you tell me a little bit more, just really briefly, what that's, what that meant?
So, instrument of measure is a test. For example, there are things besides tests that are instruments of measure. But when you're talking about MCAS, kids sit down and take a test. So that's, the individual test is an instrument. So to, to put it in more the vernacular, they're using a different test now in 2021 compared to 2018. So you even see that the, in 2021, the categories are exceeding, meeting, partial meeting, and not meeting. In 2018, if you go back to eighteen, it was advanced proficient, needs improvement, and failing. That was the paper-based, we call them MCAS 1.0. And in 2019 and 21, it's the computer-based, what's frequently referred to as MCAS 2.0. So, type of, the method of testing changed and the content of the test changed. And I've seen the state analysis of the comparison between the paper test and the electronic test. They don't line up. And this basically does a multiplication fudge factor to try to align the two tests. It's statistical nonsense. They didn't do it. But they'll never say that they didn't do it. So, you know, that's my editorial comment there, I suppose. Some folks had argued with me, but they noticed, for example, that some students took a paper-based version of the electronic test and they did that as a control to see what would happen. Students who took the same questions on paper scored markedly higher than the students who took the tests electronically. So when they say paper and electronic, you know, it's all comparable. Their own internal checking mechanism indicated it would be comparable. So, I, I'm just pointing out that if you're going to look at, say, 2018 and the earlier iterations of MCAS, I don't think you're looking at the same thing.
Okay.
I just want to add that the 2019 ELA tenth grade test was also the first time that they did that new generation and then they screwed it up. And then they had to go back and retract a bunch of kids' test scores because they had a racist question on it. And so that caused a whole other thing. So this is the first year that they've done it again since that. And it's, it's all, it's all very strange. Yeah.
Yeah. So when, that's why I was saying at the beginning, you really need to be very wary around the 2021 MCAS data. Not only do you have the COVID impacts, you have the difference in the test in terms of the questions themselves, you have the difference in the method of testing. And it's all balled into 2021 and good luck teasing out what's causing what.
Thanks, that's helpful. I didn't know how much to attribute it to the difference in testing. On the Fowler slide, it talks about creating additional after-school opportunities for identified students.
Yeah, we've got, we, we have a couple of things going on. We have our couple of things, one thing that always happens or has always been there since I've been there is an after-school homework club for that is by invitation only. And so it's very targeted to students who genuinely need that, that extra support. We also have peer tutoring that started up by National Junior Honor Society. And that's taken off like wildfire, more than I, more than I expected. We have a number of students staying after school who are being tutored by seventh and eighth graders who are in the National Honor Society. It's really cool. Mrs. Coleman is there to supervise that. And finally, and this is very different this year, our MTSS teachers are teaching an after-school math intervention for students. It's also by invitation only. And students will go to that. It's also by invitation only. And, uh, students will go to that that need to work on specific skills. This will be a dynamic group. So students will come in and then they might exit if they don't need it. And other students, uh, freeing up seats for other students to come in. So those are the three after-school, uh, opportunities that we have going on.
That's awesome. Do you have a sense of how many kids are participating in those?
Um, I can get that information to you. I wouldn't, I wouldn't know off the top of my head, but I can do, I can get that information to Brian.
Okay, thanks. And then my last one also might be one that's not, um, like a spur of the moment question. But, um, for the high school, do you have any sense of how many kids fall into that high need category?
Yeah, like it's, um, it's around, well, hang on, I can, I can, so quickly. It's around 70?
Okay.
75?
Okay. Thank you.
Just to add, I think, and Chuck, can you correct me if I'm wrong? These numbers, these MCAS, these are also including out-of-district kids as well, right? So even though they may be out of district, they, the scores do count towards Maynard's overall MCAS, right? So they might not be Maynard High School students, but they are Maynard students. That would be the equivalent of a high school. Same thing for Fowler and, and Green Meadow, correct?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, um, do we wanna go back around, um, Lydia? Or do you?
Sorry, I'm eating dinner.
It's okay, we can, do you wanna do Elizabeth first and then go back to you? Okay, Elizabeth.
Okay, this is the more, uh, the, the deeper questions, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so Rob, I was just wondering, I noticed that you did not break it down by high needs versus not high need students. I was just wondering if that's because it's just one grade.
Elizabeth, it's, it's one grade and as, as, um, Chuck was saying though, if you really wanted to take a look at our high needs, you're, you're, we tested between only between 94 and, and 100 kids in the, in the couple of years. So if you take a look at that, our percentage of high needs into one of the three categories or a combination of the categories, is you're probably talking in, in regard to over 50%, maybe 60% of the students, even maybe higher, that falls into that. But because it was only one grade, we really just kind of took a look at the idea of, and it's your first time ever taking the test. Is we just really did a comparison of how they're doing and then how they did against the state.
Yeah. Um, so I know that all of this is very wonky and everything is strange. And I know that it's all different instruments and everyone's had a hard couple of years. And so I know, I know each of you put together a slide of what you hope are the next steps. And so I was just wondering, you know, in general, what do you think these scores show us is the way forward? I mean, I, I know you have things about data, um, and using the MTSS. Do you think there's anything that we should be noticing about our schools here? Anything that you haven't said there? I know, I mean, obviously you said that, you know, the high need kids took a hit. And, you know, the, the, it looks like it's about things like their attendance and all that. But, you know, is there anything here that we should know besides what you've put in the slides, I guess?
Absolutely. We need high-quality, um, curriculum materials. That will, uh, come from school committee approving requests to provide those. Um, I know probably all three schools are, are building in extra funding for next year uh, in our budgets to get, uh, high-quality curriculum. Rob and I are in the middle of an LA literacy pilot and, uh, committee looking at, uh, replacing the, uh, curriculum in different components of it, uh, at Green Meadow and Fowler. Super exciting work. And next, uh, we need to have math. And that needs to be a cycle so that once ELA is done, then we move on to math, then we move on to science, then we move on to social studies or whatever. And then it cycles back. And then you go back to ELA so that nothing is ever getting too old or too, you know, uh, outdated, uh, and everything's always staying fresh. So I would say the number one way this school committee could support this is through providing, uh, that funding for high-quality curriculum.
Okay. Um, and you said that, you mentioned that the targets for next year are already visible to you in the folder that you opened today. Um, how do they look? Are they doable? Are you, how are you feeling about this?
Yeah, I was actually surprised. I, um, so basically it's sort of like, um, what it does is it, it takes your, uh, your baseline data, which is, uh, say an average, uh, students were an average of 49, 495 uh, on the science test I saw. So the average score on the science test at Fowler within grades five and eight was a 495. Proficient is 500, you know, needs improvement is like 480. So we were 495, just under proficient as an average. And our target for next year is like 496.5. I mean, every target was only up about 1.5 points, um, which I was, I was a little surprised. I think the targets are gonna be very, very doable. I have a feeling we'll exceed our targets.
Okay. Um, and when the teachers have looked at this data, um, how are they feeling about the MCAS data that they've seen? And then you, you mentioned that they've been having, they've done some data analysis on it with the MTSS teachers and without them. So how are they feeling about it?
Um, I think at Fowler, the teachers, um, aren't, aren't really diving into this data. There's so much more relevant and, uh, um, recent and relevant data that they're looking at. Our students, um, get on IXL every single day, which is adaptive. So it, you know, if you're in a class and you are in sixth grade, but you're at a third grade with some specific concept in math, you're working at that third grade level in IXL and it's building up from there. So we have data sources that are like IXL, the star benchmarks, the dibbles, the days, things that weren't last fall during the dumpster fire or last spring during the dumpster fire, but were, you know, very recent this year, that is more meaningful and impactful data that they're spending their time studying. We are, we are looking at this data. It is important. But, but right now, I would see that, I would say the average teacher at Fowler is telling you they're looking at data that is from like last week and not, um, data that's from the MCAS.
Makes sense. All right, thanks. That's it for now.
Okay, Lydia?
Um, I don't have any clarifying questions right now. And if I come up with any, I will forward them to Superintendent Haas or to Hillary. Um, I just wanna say that in comparison to previous, um, presentations, this one is far more explanatory and clear. And I really, really appreciate the amount of work that you all have put into this. And it is evident that your district leadership team meetings are really, really productive. And, um, and are really benefiting, uh, this district. And I'm, I'm really excited the fact that the leadership in each of the three buildings is working together and on the same page for the first time in a really long time. I really, really enjoy seeing all of you interact and work off each other. And I just wanna thank you all very much for the work that you've been putting in.
Thank you, Lydia. Thank you.
I was thinking that as they were presenting, that it was really cool to see how they seem to be on the same page. Which wasn't noticeable so much in years past.
Well, it seems very aligned, right? And I think that's what we've always been talking about, doing a lot more is right. How do we align, you know, the, or the continuity, right, from the grade to grade? And I think that's what, um, sounds like the, the collaborative efforts, the leadership efforts and have been really very intentional in doing. So I, I concur with, with that. Thank you. And also kudos to the presentation format. Thank you for, for, for kind of also adhering to that again. Because I know it really helps us kind of process the, the nuts and bolts of, of the data, um, and, and keep on track. So I, I really wanna give a shout out to that. Um, just keeping with that as much as possible. I did have a couple more questions.
I was gonna say, Rob and I will give Chuck the credit for that. He kept us, he kept us to the standard format.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yep, absolutely.
Senior statesman.
Hillary, I did have, um, some other questions, um, that were more substantive. Um, that's okay.
Yeah, I was gonna go in the same order and do Mary next, but you can go.
Yeah, yeah, you go ahead. Yep.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, so, um, also reiterating what Lydia said, the, the work on the part of, of the leadership as well as the staff. I've had a couple of conversations with staff members who have said that this year is even more difficult than last. So, um, the fact they're still giving 150% is, is pretty amazing. I, I couple of, of areas of concern, well, of concern. I know that there's at the elementary level, uh, Rob, you know, there's a lot of work going on, obviously with that literacy pilot, which is so, it's so important, but I'm really worried that we're leaving math at a standstill while we're really concentrating on the literacy piece. And I'm wondering, um, if there's any work being done for the remediation of that. Are the MTSS, um, teachers working on that also at the same time that they're working on the literacy?
So to be very honest, Mary, is, is because we started the literacy area of last year. You know, before we even looked at the MCAS scores. And that was a, that was a rejuvenation of a previous conversation about literacy that kind of got abandoned. And then we went down this area and, and kind of on the forefront that in many ways, learning to read will encompass many aspects. Not just in ELA, but mathematics also, because a lot of the testing and everything has become a, a large of it, reading, uh, to go along with it. That we did focus primarily on, on, um, mathem- I mean, sorry, on ELA and literacy. But the MCAS test demonstrated that, you know, there's a, a large need in the area of mathematics. And, um, Terry Morrison, who's in charge of the Title I and, and, and really had been a math coach and, and is now doing that now, going back to her kind of her previous position than, um, than she had last year. So she's going into the classroom, she's working with the teachers. I would go back to what Mike said is, um, we, we kind of got away, it seems, from a, a curriculum acknowledgement. And we need to really take a look at our curriculum and what we're doing. We just had a conversation with our team leaders about the essence of math being a priority and making sure that it's in the schedule. And although we're going down this route of literacy, not forget that math and to spend an hour, a day in, in mathematics, you know. So it's on our, it's on our mind. Um, and Charles and I have had some conversations. And Mike and I and Chuck continue to have conversations. And we do that again with combines of like Terry Morrison and Title I. And take Terry, a lot of Terry's expertise as a math coach also. So, um, it is there, it's just that I'm afraid of putting way too many things on the plate of teachers and not doing anything well. So, but I haven't forgotten about it, Mary, I promise you. It's, it's a pet peeve of mine, too.
Times are wasting and I just see, you know, the kids slipping backwards and then it has to be made up at the middle school and that.
You're right, Mary, you're, you're right.
Yeah, but Mary, I wanted to talk, say something about that, too. I think one of the, one of the reasons why we started with literacy with Jennifer, um, when, back when she was here, was because teachers, um, actually there isn't an, an actual curriculum program that we have in Maynard for ELA. We have various things you'll hear. Um, of course, uh, Green Meadow has more. They have foundations, they have Haggerty. At Fowler, it's essentially homegrown teachers units. They, they, they meet together in CPT, they plan together. But really, they've kind of made, made them up. Some people have taken things from prior schools they worked in. So it's, I call it the Wild West out there because a lot of teachers are, are, are just kind of working together and staying a few days ahead of the kids. They're doing an amazing job, but they don't have something that's provided to them. Whereas at least with math, there is the Go Math curriculum that we have. And so we knew that at least that was in place and we would start with literacy, then the next year move on to math. So I'm, I am really excited to do that. And I share that same worry with you, Mary. But I think, um, I think actually, even though we've seen this dip in MCAS scores in math, I think the greatest concern is, um, shoring up our, our literacy, uh, program and getting everybody on the same page.
I absolutely agree with the literacy pilot. We've been working hard to, to get that in place. I just didn't wanna go for one and leave something else behind. Um, and one of the other, one of my, my comments is that at the high school and the middle school, there is like the, you know, um, credit recovery and, and the support system. You talked about it, Mike, with the after-school. And I know Chuck did a wonderful job and Chuck and his staff, um, during COVID, with catching those kids and actually bringing in them in and, and having the summer program and that. And we'll talk about the, talk about it with the budget, um, when that presentation happens. Is there anything that we can do at the elementary school? I know they're little and to have them stay after school. But is there any kind of support, like outside the school day, that would also benefit them? That we could use SRF funds for and that kind of thing?
Well, we are looking at, and there was a summer program last year, um, for, for the students. And we have had a discussion about a directed summer school again this year. Looking at specific students that are in need beyond the students that may be under the umbrella of special education. So we're, we're gonna look at that, look at the students that are, um, in whether it be ELL or other aspects of, of, in need. But, you know, a lot of ours does take place and, and much like Mike was saying, I'm impressed with our MTSS group. We have a group of well, you know, um, defined as far as experts in, in certain areas of teachers. And they are going into classrooms with teachers. So they're, they're really hitting them hard in there. They're pulling students out in the, you know, we're working in all areas, you know what I mean? In order to give the students, um, what they need during the, during the day. Because, Mary, I really do think that, yeah, for many families, it'd be difficult maybe to, you know, stay after school or do other things or whatever it is for the small ones.
Yeah, I agree. I know.
Mary, we need a late bus. It's about probably 20 grand a year and we need it.
That's something that maybe we should think about. Do you think it would be advantageous?
Oh, my gosh, absolutely. I've been asking for it for years. It'd be amazing to have a late bus.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's just 100% gonna come down to budget and, you know, it's, uh, but if we could do that, that'd be great.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for that feedback. Um, and the, um, and I'm gonna hold you to this, Mike, because there have been so many conversations over the years, again, about putting, um, the curriculum in place that every five years we're reassessing math. Every five years we're doing it and we keep hearing it and hearing it. And for some reason, it doesn't seem to be happening. So we really need to institutionalize that as well as, you know, other things that we're doing. So, um, thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, um, so just a couple of things. One is, I think in the, and we'll have the budget presentation later, but Mary, I, I was wondering, that request for the, the lunch support, which is supposed to, the intention is to increase instructional time. I'm hoping that will, you know, kind of complement some of these points, because that would be the Green Meadow, you know. And then for fourth grade, um, or, you know, the middle earlier at Fowler. So that would be something that I think would be, um, hopefully add to that layer, that request to, to provide that extra time. And I also was wondering, um, about basic. Now that we have basic, they seem to be another potential opportunity that there seems to be a very strong, um, collaboration that they, they have done with team chairs sometimes and with getting, you know, focusing on executive function. Although it's, we're still in a COVID world. But I'm just curious how we might be able to leverage homework time. Because they do have for kids who, um, go there if their recommendations, um, are given to the basic staff for certain, um, if there's a, you know, particular child, how, how that feedback, is it, is it, has it opened up and provided opportunities to have a little bit more continuity for aftercare that for kids maybe, um, who need that? And I don't know if that would be more Mike or Rob.
I know, I know Natasha, that, um, they do work with our grade-level teachers. And I know that the students in, in, by grades go down to the library and they take opportunities and take time in order to be able to do their homework that's, that's available to them. And, and sometimes it might be reading, whether it become, you know, from Alexia or something like that. Sometimes it is paper that might've been passed out that they get assistance on. So there is that communication between the members of basic and the, and the, uh, and the teams members for, for the students that are there. So I, I don't have any data that really says whether it's made that improvement or not. But I would probably say to you, many parents are very happy because they don't have to take that home and they're not, you know, they don't have to have those, uh, those arguments at home anymore with their students because they're children, because it's taken care of. And, and they go home, they can be kids, you know, I mean, they can do the other thing. And when they go home, they can be kids, you know, I mean, they can do the other things that they need to do, so.
And it's new, right? So it hasn't really been established, I don't think we would have a lot of data. I just am hoping that we might be able to monitor that or tap into that resource a little bit more for for families that are participating in that, who might have a child who, you know, needs a little bit more extra support and just communicate that. Because their their staff seem to be very well engaged and willing to to do that support when focused in homework time.
Yeah, I can have a conversation with Michael, he's a, he's very open to any kind of communication, he's he's really good about it.
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think too, Natasha, I was going to say that, you know, homework, even in a normal year, homework is the great unequalizer in a school. Some kids go home and their parents make sure they do it, other kids, it's it's much more of a struggle. And, you know, I think remote learning was essentially like a hundred percent homework or whatever your school was homework. And we saw how how unequal it was. And so even in a normal year, homework is 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 a really thing. You know, in Worcester, for instance, when I was there, we we banned it, there was no homework assigned. Because the the vast majority of students did not have the right support at home to be able to complete it. And, you know, in Maynard, I think most the vast majority of students are in the opposite scenario, they can do the homework. But any support that basic can can offer is outstanding.
Great, thank you, Mike. And a couple more questions, Chuck, you had you spoke a lot about attendance and 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 the outreach for for families. And I know that school refusal was is often a symptom of anxiety or some type of depression or panic. And I think the social emotional piece is really, given with the pandemic, is certainly more more heightened. And I'm just curious how that how that approach with supporting families is is introduced? When there needs to be, like, how how is it addressed or if there's, is there a connection with? If it's a child who is on, you know, an IEP, is there engagement with the team chair? What would a a family, I guess, expect? You know, if that would be something that would be occurring in their in their household?
Well, for a student on an IEP, the student's liaison would probably reach out first. If we're noticing attendance difficulty and if it is, the team chair might ask to reconvene the team. I do think that what we're seeing is mental health and stress. I know that even at the college level, failure rates are up very dramatically this year for freshmen in college in particular. And I would, you're seeing a lot of the same mental health challenges. What gets to be of particular concern at high school level is if a student is feeling depressed and I, maybe not even clinical depression. But if the student's kind of down, kind of feeling a little bit hopeless, because they can't see their friends and they're wearing this mask all the time and, you know, cognitively, they're wondering at a different level, when is this all going to be over? You know, when students reach sixteen and seventeen, school leverage drops pretty dramatically. So we're really trying very hard to students as soon as they're showing any sorts of signs of kind of getting off track. So this is frequently phone calls home. We're working with parents, we've had many more parent meetings this year than we've had in the past. So we're trying to reach out to the parents, we're trying to connect students with other students. We're trying to connect students with counselors at the school. Our our guidance staff and counseling staff is busier than it has ever been. So it's very individualized, Lydia, we look at the individual student and we might even and we meet weekly to review all of our students, by the way. So our guidance team and nurse Janet, who I believe was in the meeting, is in the meeting tonight. We meet weekly to review all of our students. And one of the questions is, who's the best person to try to connect with this student? Or who's the best person to try to connect with home? Is it the guidance counselor, is somebody developed a relationship there? Is it a particular teacher that might have a little bit better connection with the student? So we're we're trying to personalize at that level of who is the best person or who is the best team to reach out to students. And we've had a fair amount of success. But the numbers are so much higher than what we've seen in pre-COVID years that it's really pretty daunting. I think this is a fairly accurate assessment. Prior to COVID, in a given year, we were probably closely tracking three or four percent of our students and getting them additional support. Students in need of additional support this year are probably more on the order of fifteen percent or even slightly higher. So that shift is is enormous. When it's four kids out of three hundred and four percent of kids out of three hundred and fifty, you're tracking about fifteen kids. When it's fifteen percent, you're tracking fifty kids. And although we have slightly more resources in in guidance, we've gone from two and a half to three. That's that's a big shift in just total numbers of students who need that sort of inventive work. So we're we're all pulling really hard and we are trying to identify students week by week.
On a on a continuation of that thought process, is the, do you feel that the reasons sometimes are not necessarily just the student, it might be more family or home environment where potentially advocating for a town social worker to also assist with some of these maybe circumstances that can't be absorbed totally in the school? But do impact the child's ability to come to school might be what we should be pushing for?
Well, I I think I think social, social workers in general through the town or through the school who could do direct family outreach would be enormously helpful. We know that s- some families, there have been people who've lost jobs and there's real economic hardship at home. Adults are also having, you know, mental health and stress issues as well and that impacts home. And for some families, it's as basic as for the last couple of years, their fourteen, fifteen, sixteen year olds have kind of been on their own for school because folks go to work because they need to put a roof over their head. And that's asking a lot of a fifteen year old to maintain self-discipline at home while a parent is out working. So social workers would be enormously helpful through the town side. We would welcome them. I mean, part of why we were doing home visits pre-COVID and standing at a distance from some doorways even during COVID was it's a bit of a social work model, you know, we want to show that we care. We want us to ask directly what resources are needed. Yep, I see Lydia has a hand up.
Um, and this isn't just to you, this is like to Brian and the rest of you. I know that the select board is considering whether or not the town has a need for a social worker. Would you guys be able to compose a letter to send to them to advocate for that? Because we we have advocated for it, but I think that if if you had if you also sent a letter and gave more specific details behind the need for it, that might actually go further than the school committee's plea for a town social worker.
Defer to Brian, but if if it's okay, we can certainly write a letter. Yeah, we'd be very interested, sure.
And Hillary, I know that you, this this came up in I in the and discussion, I think Chris Krista Silva was party to listening to that advocacy when then the collaborative came out, the person who joins with the police department. But and I I don't want to, if you, I don't know if you want to add a little bit to that context, but basically, Maynard Maynard's needs as a whole were identified as substantially higher compared to the other members in the collaborative.
I also wonder, I think it'd be really helpful for the principals and Brian to write a letter. But I also think that feedback from the school social workers might carry a weight. I, when the jail diversion social worker spoke at the Human Relations Commission meeting about how Maynard was utilizing, and I don't remember the percentage right now, but an enormous amount of her time, she was spending three full days and two partial days working on Maynard cases as opposed to her other six communities. And then she said that all of her other communities have a town social worker, we're the only one that doesn't. I also mentioned that the other day, that when at our tri board meeting, looking at those, the towns that were most similar, looking at the four towns that were identified as most similar to Maynard, three of them now have town social workers. So it's definitely a direction they're going, but when the town social worker was explaining all the data that she has about the influence that Maynard lack of a town social worker has on the town, that seemed to be pretty meaningful to Chris. So I wonder if school social workers similarly would be, their data would be received similarly, Jeff?
Yeah, we, our our guidance counselors would gladly point out where the need is. I think at Fowler, right now, there's at least six or seven kids that could have access to private counseling services and support services. But they're they're, they don't have the outside counselor to provide that service. So we have kids in need of service, can't access through their own insurance. So to have somebody assisting them and getting that level of support would be very helpful. So the guidance counselor would absolutely, along with the school psychologist, write a letter as far as what where the need is. Our major families, we, you know, we've contracted with an agency, Asabet Valley, the the family partnership, which provides that sort of wraparound social services for a very small group of families, but we can't even meet all the needs that are out there. So the counselors would 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 write a letter.
Jeff, is that the service that that comes to the high school and meets with some of the kids? Because I've spoken with parents who said that just the 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 opportunity for their kids to be able to meet with the counselors at the high school has been so beneficial and so helpful for them and the health of their families. The only thing that has been sort of an obstacle is the kids get getting pulled out of class. They don't like being sort of singled out.
Right, and that that's actually, that's actually a different service that our our council.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, Elliot Hospital comes in and they have a couple of people, they just restarted, I believe, with somebody at Green Meadow that could come in, but they can only work with certain kids, too. So there's a little bit of a limitation. So we have different pockets of how we're supporting folks, a town social worker, even half time if we have to share with another town. Would help some of our our neediest families quite a bit.
And Hillary, just to circle back to what I was also wanted to allude to is the the social worker.
Hang on a second, um, I I because because I was speaking about the Human Relations Commission meeting and then Kathleen Fitzgerald raised her hand, in case she's correcting something that I was saying, can we let her?
Sure.
Just in case I was misspoken and she like, can we let her? Are you still here? I'm not seeing her now.
She's there, I don't think she's muted, but she's. Yeah, she's she's muted.
No, 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 it's okay, no, I I didn't mean to, I was just playing with my phone, so. I just came into, I just came into the meeting, so I missed what was being said, but so now I'm glad I'm here, so I'm going to just listen. No, no, that's great, I'm glad I'm glad we're talking about this, so I'm listening now.
And so just Hillary, just what I was also thinking about adding, the the one that the collaboration that we have with the town, you have to go through the police department, too. So access to the social worker feels like you have to more of a punitive direction, where it's not just directly to a social worker, it goes through the police department, which might not feel as people willing to, you know, to do that.
So I believe they put the info on their website, so somebody could contact her directly, but her job is still specifically meant for
The police department.
Specific areas of like jail diversion work. But she's trying, but it's really not her role.
It's, anyway, that that was the only thing, it was just the the social worker piece and and thinking about attendance with regards to you know, anxiety and all that. And I would be in support of any effort along those lines that the leaders have another tool to help with getting kids access to their education.
Um, Jeff, your hand is still up, do you have more or is it just still up from before?
You left the signal light on.
Okay. My comments have to do with primarily the things like the after school support. I know, I'm wondering if things like the homework club at Fowler and the after school support. Do you feel like you would like to be able to reach more kids through those programs? And more money would let you like expand homework club to more kids? Or after school tutoring and similar, primarily with Fowler with the homework club? Because I know kids that have wanted to participate who haven't been able to because it's been a full. But also to some extent for the high school, Saturday school. Would more resources help you meet more kids' needs?
I think Mike Mike alluded to the late bus. We have an after, we have a homework club at the high school as well. It runs from dismissal at two oh five till three o'clock when the extra curriculum start. But a late bus, I think, particularly for the younger high school students, freshmen and sophomores who transportation is more of an issue would would be helpful. And I think some, you know, some some funding for curriculum materials would be helpful as well. To have I I think, you know, a broader range of materials or even different sorts of materials to make homework club feel a little bit different, too, or Saturday school feel a little bit different, I think would be helpful.
For Green Meadow, in terms of out of school support, I know the kids really need to take the bus and get home. But it seemed like the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club in the summer was really effective. And I didn't know, and I I keep going back to thinking about Maynard's strengths and that the passion that the community has for the kids the willingness to volunteer, particularly for the town kids, is one of the biggest strengths in Maynard. So I didn't know if there were any any way to work with the Boys and Girls Club to have like homework support throughout the year for the little kids that are going there after school. Volunteer.
Yeah, they've kind of explained to us that, you know, as far as they don't really do that, I don't think, as much as for homework support. You know what I mean, as far as theirs program goes. But they are, I mean, they're supportive in the fact that there's a group of students that do go over there every single day, whether by van or by walking or or that take the buses and everything, but it's a drop in center primarily for them. And so in order to try to say is, okay, we'd like that, I don't, I don't really know. It's a it's a good question and I don't mind posing it to them. But from our general communications, it's just, it's not, it's not an area where they said is like, unless we were going to maybe send somebody there, you know what I mean, from the school district or something like that, you know, so that's a maybe those are the conversations we can have.
I know that they they used to have like the first half hour, forty five minutes for all the kids to do their homework. I don't know, it's been a while since I was involved, so do they still do that, Rob, or?
You know, not, you know, it's a funny thing is is I said, Mary is like, the way they talk about it is, it's just the kids can drop in and and come in and just and kind of go play in the gym and do other things. And they can leave when they want, you know, when they want to leave. So, you know, I don't know whether or not, if it's something we could, something else we could do. I I don't mind, I don't mind taking a look at it and and seeing what else we can do. I mean, these, you're right, these are places that kids go, they either go to basic or they go to, they go to Boys and Girls Club. So I'll I'll talk more about it and let's see if they can put something together.
The homework time there, but I don't think that there's, I don't think they have the staffing to provide a lot of academic support for the homework.
Exactly.
Um, and I, when we think about the kids that are the high, the high need kids that were identified on the MCAS results as needing help. I think those kids are more highly represented probably with kids that are going to the Boys and Girls Club for after school care than kids that are paying for basic. Um, and like for the kids that are going home after school that have parents home with them, they're getting support from their parents. Kids that are going basic are getting support there. It, it could be the same group of kids that needs that extra support. And there was that, like a really effective partnership in the summer.
Okay. It's, it's, it's a good thought, Hillary. I don't mind. Again, I don't mind having a conversation every, every single day. So. I don't want to have a conversation with their, you know, um, with their chairperson. Sure.
Um, but I love, um, like all the things you're trying to do with the kids and the different creative ways of helping. The kids that are struggling, um, catch up. I really appreciate all the effort everybody's putting into helping the children. Um, I saw Elizabeth, you put your hand up.
I was just gonna say that I, um, in the past, um, in the town where I work, we have had, um, National Honor Society students go into the Boys and Girls Club and help with homework. And I don't know if that's something they've ever done in Maynard, but that, you know, that there's usually a little room and then you kind of rotate the kids in. I don't know if we've ever done that here.
Uh, the, the National Honor Society at Maynard High actually has a tutoring coordinator who's a student. But to date, it's been largely matched up with high school students in need of tutoring support. It's something we could explore though.
Thanks.
Mr. Bass? Oh, he's muted.
When all my clocks, I have been a room where there's forty clocks when they all go off, I mute myself, but then I forget that Colleen has to unmute me. So, um, I, I, I think that's an amazing idea. Hillary, I'd never thought of that. That the students who are, are going to the Boys and Girls Club are probably more likely to be in the, in the high needs category than not. And, um, and if we could get some in National Honor Society students over there and do some tutoring, that would be amazing. I mean, I've been in the Boys and Girls Club because I walked a student there once, um, when, after the crossing guard had, had gone home. So I, I wanted to walk her there. And I didn't see a quiet space. I saw like a lot of games going on and kids running around. But I probably just saw a little bit of it and maybe there's some quiet rooms where kids could actually. Do some work with, with, with adult supervision. I think it's an awesome idea.
They're really an awesome group of people. I know I, when I, my daughter was trying to do homework club, but transportation to after school care was a problem. And so I had asked them about some issues with that and they were really open to creative ideas to try to help. Um, increase access to, to any like accessibility to different programming that kids need. Um.
Thank you for surfacing that.
Oh, Mary?
Just had, um, one other one. So, um, and this is for all three of you, um, although I think Chuck is a little bit different. Um, so not everybody is struggling. We have some kids that have continued to do really well, um, through COVID and that. And the concern I've heard from just a couple of parents, but I wonder how many others are thinking it is. What are we doing for those kids that are, you know, we're, we're doing so much catch up, which is so necessary. But at the same token, and Natasha talked about it too, like, you know, we tend to lose maybe some of our kids to the charter schools. Because they don't feel like their kids are being pushed enough. Um, so can you guys speak a little bit to that or? I know the teachers are being stretched in so many different directions, but.
You know, when they, um, I can speak to it a little bit and I think I would like to also think about it. And be more thoughtful in my, um, information I get to you about that. Um, because our focus has so been this year on gap filling. And not, you know, on enrichment. Um, but the, while you were talking, the thing that came to mind was the, you know, the National Honor Society induction that we had the other night that was so awesome. Um, and, um, you know, we still maintain an honor roll. We still have students that are indicating to teachers that they're working really hard to bring their grades up and that they're working really knowing that the end of the term is tomorrow. So at, at Fowler, it's tomorrow. So kids are all abuzz in the school about turning in work that's missing. Um, so I, I, I would take a guess that, um, there is a fair amount of extra stuff being done for kids that, that are, um. That are higher flyers that want to push themselves. Um, but let me, um, let me pull some more information together and get that to Brian to get to you, Mary, because I think it's a really good question.
That'd be great. Thank you. And Rob, I don't know if you can share anything.
I would, I would kind of, I'd kind of go down the area, Mary, of is, you know, when we teach, going back to our curriculum, we teach certain areas, especially in that area of reading and everything. Kids are reading at a variety of levels. Um, they leave, they read at. Their own primary level. Some students, depending upon the independent levels, read below, some read higher. So when you come into a classroom or whatever, I would say is that a teacher. If you walked in, Mary, you came into my first grade class, you're gonna see that kids have a variety of, of, um. Materials inside their, their book bins and they, and these are going to be. Yours and mine don't look alike because we're not, because we're not the same person or not reading at the same. So they have that ability and, and that in Dukles Library, which was, um, you know, funded, you know, again. Is a, is a primary example of, of leveled eyes books that kids, that teachers go into, they use that resource in order to give the kids. And no matter what level of higher or lower, whatever it is, independent for them. Um, so we do have some of that resources, uh, Mary, for the area that we're kind of using. But as far as programmatic, as far as like, you know, other honor programs towards, that's more of a middle and a, and a high school kind of situation.
And Mary, we still maintain an active, um, leveled math program with our accelerated math, our algebra classes. Um, and our adaptive programs such as IXL, they not only backfill gaps, but they also. So some students are working on, you know, in eighth grade, they're working on ninth and 10th grade math concepts. Um, when they're in IXL. Um, so it's adaptive for everybody, not just the students who are behind. But I do want to, uh, kind of circle up with our teachers and put together a list of the things that they're doing for enrichment. And get that to, um, Brian to get to the school committee.
Thank you. I, I was really hoping that, and, and again, you know, this is a, not a great year, so maybe this is something to aspire to next year. But that our teachers were on such a learning curve, um, because of COVID, you know, with the. The online learning and, and the tools and that, that I guess I'm, I'm really hoping that when the dust settles, if that ever happens. That that will also help to further differentiate the, the learning, especially for the high, like you say, the high flyers. Are the ones that, um, we, I would really love to, to get some more momentum behind. So.
Um, is there anything, any last questions or comments about the MCAS? Okay, so we can move on to the budget presentation.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Great. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Yeah.
All right, well. It's getting kind of late, so it's now nine o'clock. I, we'll do the best we can for a nine o'clock budget presentation. So with that, I will have, uh. Colleen, will you be my, uh, my partner in crime here? And, uh, put the presentation up. So hopefully you will see the connection between the last two hours of conversation, you know, a variety of ways. And our proposed budget, there are some direct links here, which, um, I think will show themselves. So first of all. This is the proposed FY twenty three budget. And we look at it as a, we do recommend a fiscally responsible budget that maintains our services. Moves Maynard Public Schools forward and improves student outcomes. While aligning with our own strategic plan, plan and the town master plan. And you can see by the list of names on the screen that it's been an inclusive process. So it's included people at the building level, the administrators, the teachers. Um. The Director of Technology, the Director of Student Services, et cetera. It's really been an inclusive process to get input from everybody. To come up with what you're about to see. Next page, please. Uh, so this connects to our strategic plan and our asks and our programming. That we look at connects to what we've said, which has been on, uh, our strategic plan, which is inclusive practices that support all students. In superior academic experience. Along with developing global citizens. Some of these are more directly in this year's ask. Some of them you'll see are in how, what are we doing looking forward? Next, please. We, so again, we used our strategic plan, the town master plan, input from building administrators, staff. Financial data from the town, from the state to create again, a fiscally responsible maintenance of that first budget. For the Maynard Public Schools. One of the key things that we have to do without question, we meet all of our contractual obligations. And while, while we do that, we also strive to maintain all of our current programs and services that are effective. That are student centered and we advocate to add in strategic areas that are crucial to move our district forward. Um, and that will include an athletic director and additional intensive services for many of our struggling students. That's perfect, Colleen. Um. Connections to the town master plan. Again, we'll post this in the spirit of time. I'm not actually going to read the. Items of the town master plan. That's a group that has met, I've met with them and there's, um. It's in the actual, in the town master plan that identifies ways that the school system. Um. Supports the town master plan. So we'll go to the next page. Budget history. We'll get to some numbers because I think there, that fifteen people that stuck with us tonight want to see some numbers. So here we go. Um, and we do appreciate them sticking with us. Uh, this is a little bit of history of salaries, expenses and overall budget. We go back to the FY twenty one adopted budget. And we were at twenty million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. FY twenty-two amended because it got changed a couple of times throughout that year. Um, was twenty-one million, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. And our request for this year is just slightly more than that coming at twenty-two million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. So as you can see, there's a slight increase there. Um, there we go. And we'll go through this list, which is probably a little bit hard to read where it says includes. The key that I would like to point out on this page though, is the town administrators. Recommended budget to the Maynard Public Schools is twenty-two million, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our proposed budget request is twenty-two million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. Which is only a difference of twenty-five hundred and three dollars. So we're very cognizant. I guess why is that important? You know, that is really important to us. And, and I hope to the people listening, that we are really trying to be cognizant of. Maynard as a whole community, as a whole town. What are our needs? Um, it would be easy for me to say, hey, I really am asking for twenty-five million dollars. Because with those extra millions of dollars, we could do X, Y, and Z. But at the same time, I recognize that there are infrastructure needs and we as a school community recognize that. So we tried to be very strategic, uh, in our asks so that they're purposeful. And you'll see as we go through, they're needed and there, you'll hear the connection. What was just spoken about by all of the principals to this. So thank you, Colleen. So it's broken down and you'll see, I'm just giving you a preview. It's broken down to, from MPS. To then the high school, the Fowler School and the Green Meadow. So we will walk through each area. So you can see what were our asks and why were they our asks. So for improving Maynard Public Schools, sort of the overarching, we've, I'm making the case that we need an athletic director. Um, clearly most towns. And I, many towns began operating in the model that we're currently using. Which isn't, quite frankly, it's not a bad model. That's where, like I said, many towns started with. A teacher who was an athletic director who got a healthy stipend, but it's a really big job. And the job, it's funny if you think about it, it really doesn't matter if you're the athletic director for Maynard or Acton Boxborough. You still have one football team. And you have a varsity basketball team for boys and a varsity basketball team for girls. You have a baseball and a softball. Bigger systems might have a couple of extra teams. You might have, um, a lacrosse team or a field. Well, we have that. Um, you might have a couple more teams. But my point is the overwhelming responsibility of an athletic director is very similar. Regardless of the district. It's working with, it's hiring coaches, it's scheduling. It's making sure, and you'll love this one, it's making sure all the fields are used. Um, it's making sure that we reschedule games and implement weather. It's the same job. And we have somebody who's really working hard, wants this. I think it moves our district forward. I mean, even this year, we were able to add. An entire athletic program. We added winter track. We have thirty-five plus kids, maybe more by now, that indicated interest and have signed up already. This is phenomenal, especially in COVID that we can do that. Um, along with that, some of the things that have changed within the MIAA would be the addition of an athletic trainer. Um, and if you've followed interscholastic sports. You'll realize that twenty years ago, there might've been a part-time athletic director and there was certainly no athletic trainer. And we really didn't talk about concussions. We just said, put that helmet on and get out there. Things change. We rather take care of our kids. So concussions and concussion protocols came into being a while ago. And in the meantime, even more recently, the recommendation from MIAA is to absolutely have a licensed certified athletic trainer. Um, to be present at practices and game. So we're asking for that. And that really is somebody who can help take care of our students. And then another area where we see growth, if you will, um, is. Um, is the ask for an EL teacher. Um, our numbers continue to grow in that area between the. Last year and this year, we have nineteen additional students who identify as first language, not English. And eight additional students identified as English language learners. Um. And we're running, as we typically are, a pretty thin crew. So we're able to do what we do to the best of our ability, but as the numbers of these students who need these services continue to grow. We need an, another teacher to help them be successful. Cause we don't want them to be the students that are falling behind. Or are the ones where Mr. Karen Janus talks about, are they going to graduate? We want everyone to graduate. So this person would support the district and go where it's needed. And that changes depending year to year, if the kids age up from grade three to grade four or grade eight to grade nine. So that's why it's under the MPS category. And then finally, within this grouping, I've asked for a central office clerical support. So if you've been. So before my time, so I was gonna say, if you've. And you've seen this, you, you know that there have been different levels of clerical support within the central office, sometimes supporting student services. And then when budgets get tight, that goes away and then you hope it comes back, but we know it often doesn't. And, but the job still has to get done. So what ultimately happens, and I think we've seen it in Maynard before. Is that people end up not working a forty hour week. They're working a sixty hour week, being paid for a forty hour week, but they know the job has to get done. They're amazing people and that's just what they do. But it can't continue forever. People are going to get tired. People are going to leave. People are going to retire. But yet that job still has to get done. And we, we want to be in a position to move forward progressively. So that ask supports the superintendent's office, it supports the student services office. Um, and there's a variety of tasks under there which is connected to a job description. So that is really, um, something that will allow the whole district to move forward more successfully. And then the other piece on this is, um, we used to have an assistant superintendent at salary. Um, instead of simply going out and rehiring an assistant superintendent, we've watched, we've done some distributive leadership. And I think you can tell the principals are really taking some ownership. Or if you think about the MCAS presentation you just saw. It was fabulous that everybody worked collaboratively. And I think you've even noticed that there's alignment between Green Meadow and Fowler and the high school. Because they're owning more of this. So what that slide talks about is moving forward, I'm sorry, thank you, Colleen. Moving forward with a pre K to twelve curriculum director to focus on curriculum and grants and professional development. But allowing other people to really own a lot more of that than has been done in the recent past. And there's a savings of some level. It's sort of. Around, and I'm just estimating at that number of twenty-five thousand. Now you can bump the slide, Colleen. Thank you. Um, the high school. So again, I just want you to think back to the MCAS presentation and what the needs were. So what we're asking for is a Saturday school. And a summer school, which support the students who, hmm, you know, in high school, credits now matter. Remember. You need a certain amount of credits to go from freshman to sophomore a year, sophomore to junior, junior to senior, and then yay, we get to graduate. But you gotta hit those milestones. So this allows those kids that for whatever reason, and there's many different reasons, struggle to do that. It builds, it builds in the support that we know we need. Um, and they're not big ass, quite frankly. A physical education teacher, which right now we have a one point two, this is getting into the weeds. The point two would go away, so it's really a point eight, but we'd be advertising for a one point O. So to keep things clean. I would say we're asking for a one point O PE teacher, which gets us to two full-time PE teachers at the high school. I would say we're asking for a one point O PE teacher, which gets us to two full-time PE teachers at the high school. And why is that important to us? Because you know, just want to add, add for the sake of adding. Again, along with, if you think about the conversation about the athletic trainer, well, things changed with PE as well over the last several years. We're supposed to be offering PE to every student consistently. That's hard for us to do, almost impossible with one point two. With two full-time teachers, we can absolutely be in compliance with that mandate. And the other thing it'll do for a small school, which is super important. So for our kids, and we want to support all kids, and our kids who love to play band. What so often happens is that happens, you know, I'm going like this. That happens here, and now your schedule starts to get jammed up because that, all those kids, and there's like fifty of them at one time in band, what do you offer around that? Because if it's gym, now they're not in gym. You're certainly not gonna, anyway. The two phys ed teachers allows us to make sure we're meeting the state requirement without a question. It also allows greater, greater time to be spent on health and wellness topics, which I think we all know is super important, even more important this year, given the last couple of years. And it frees up the schedule a little bit to allow some flexibility. And I use band because that's typically one of the places where it gets stuck. And then finally, another really important piece, and this one has long-term impact, and you'll see it here. And you're also going to see the same thing again on Green Meadow, which is a one point O teacher for the Tiger Program. Not to be confused with the Oasis Program at the high school. So we are reaching as many kids as possible. The Tiger Program will provide students with academic, social, and emotional challenges, access to a therapeutic, and here's the key, in-district classroom environment. The classroom instruction will focus on developing executive functioning skills, coping strategies, social skills, and cognitive flexibility. So the goal here, and again, I won't repeat this all when we get to Green Meadow, but it's the idea of those kids who are struggling therapeutically to be able to meet their needs internally within district, as opposed to sending them out of district. And for those of you, you know, if you're doing your homework here, an out-of-district placement can be well more than the cost of a teacher's salary. And that doesn't even include transportation. So just given what we're seeing, both at the high school level, this is not a program we currently have. We do have the Oasis Program, which supports kids coming back into school from, sometimes from a hospitalization, but they, they're able to, that's like a home base for them. They're able to go into class. This is different, completely different, completely needed, and potentially, I say long-term because if this meets the needs of two or three kids at the high school, which is quite possible, that's a significant savings over the long haul of kids not having to leave Maynard High School. I'm really excited about that. Fowler. Colleen, you are on the ball. I so appreciate you just bouncing that screen. Their big ask, because they actually have the Tiger Program. So that's why that one doesn't show up there. They have it, and it works well. Their ask is related to the literacy program. So literacy is right now being piloted. Our principals and assistant principals and a variety of other people involved with the pilots are going on right now. So that cost is for materials and supplies. That's not a consultant, that's not a teacher, that's looking for, that's resources. Doesn't have a list of exactly what resources, simply because we don't exactly know yet. We know that, and this is more for Green Meadow, so I'll, I'll hold. But that's what that's for. We'll talk more about literacy in a moment. All right, Colleen, there we go. Now we talked Green Meadow. So the Tiger Program, I really did just explain, it's the same thing, because it's for the younger kids, the only additional ask because they are the younger kids. And if you've been to Green Meadow recently, you've probably seen some of them, because sometimes they're the ones running around. And they have a crew following and protecting them from themselves, which is why for this particular ask, there's a okay there? There's a paraprofessionals, along with the teacher for the pair, for the Tiger Program. And then the literacy program here, so if we think about literacy, we know that, and I know this. I've gotten schooled recently. I see most, Rob's still on the line. So what do we want to address within this literacy program? And again, this money is also for materials. This is not a teacher, this is not a consultant. This is to address phonics, phonological awareness, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. So those five areas of reading are what we want to address, and there isn't one program that does that. You can look around. We've done it. If you look at surrounding neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are significantly larger, smaller, they have more money, they have less money. There isn't one program that can do all five things well. So for example, what do we use? Some of what we use would be foundations, very common, very successful. We've added Hegarty this year. We're now looking at the vocabulary, the fluency, and the comprehension piece, and it's a variety of pro, of materials that we'll use to meet those needs of all of our students. And then finally on this, we have this multiple part-time people who will fill this role, lunch and recess support. So this is kind of interesting because it really does tie to our earlier conversation. Because this allows us to have, and if Rob's still on the line, he can correct me if I, like, I'm not a hundred percent on. I think I am. I'm feeling good about this. It allows us to have our elementary kids go to specials one time, which then allows an increase of instructional time by half an hour a day, every day, all year long, which our teachers want. It allows them to provide that tier-one instruction to our kids. And clearly, from what we've just heard, our kids benefit from more instructional time. So why does it say ten percent increase in instructional time? Because at thirty minutes, times a hundred and eighty-five days, you're at ninety hours of instruction. And the magic number for elementary schools per year, according to the Department of Education, is nine hundred hours. So if we can increase ninety hours a year, I mean, I'm excited about this concept. Just the numbers get me excited. Is ten percent increase of instruction. Over their time at Green Meadow, it's almost a third of the year, because I'm going three years now. So it's almost a third of a year that, by simply changing how we do lunch and recess, we could get that much more instructional time. That has to be valuable. That has to benefit our students. So, that's what that's about. And again, this is me summarizing for twenty-two million, twenty, twenty-two million, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. We get all of that. And keep in mind, this is within two thousand, five hundred dollars of the town allotment. I understand that's preliminary. We're early in the budget stage for the town, for the state, but we have been working really, really hard to think about the Maynard Public Schools primarily, to advocate for them, but to really be cognizant of the town of Maynard. We are an integral part of the town of Maynard, and the more successful we are as a school system, the more successful the town of Maynard will continue to be and only get more successful. Colleen, hit that button for me. Maybe? There we go. We got a nice pie chart. Budget presentation could not be complete without a pie chart. Look at Wayne, he's smiling, he's so happy. This is his baby. This is like, oh, and it's beautiful. And the nice thing about this pie chart, it's visual. You look at it, and you can see the big blue is Green Meadow, the big orange Fowler, the big gray, Maynard High School. The next one, yellow, special ed tuition and transportation, and then the blue one, special education. All of that, student-centered. That's like eighty percent of that pie goes right back to students. And then the smaller pieces of that pie includes everything from the school committee to the health and services, materials to facilities, legal expenses, athletics, I can make the argument athletics goes back to, anyway. Curriculum, general ed, transportation, our busing, the business office, which is all of those people and all of those things, the superintendent's office, which is all the people in there, and all the dues and supplies, legal, et cetera, IT, and then District Y. That's our district. And it's nice. Not only nice, it's appropriate that eighty to eighty-five percent of that pie goes right back to students. That's what we want. Wayne, nice pie. I see you, Wayne. Nice pie. All right, Colleen, bump us up one more. That was this year. That is this year, and I am excited about this year. I know our principals are excited about that. And I commend them for really being focused this year on their asks. But they were also, we also had conversations about, so what else do we want to do, you know, next year? You know, some of our tax revenue looks really good in town. They have all these interesting businesses popping up, and money's coming into the town of Maynard. What do we want to do? We want to make sure we are constantly focused on increasing opportunities for student joy, choice and voice. You know, what do they want? What do they need? And, you know, making it personalized to them. We know, we talked about this last year, some kids were able to get college credit during high school. And if you think about last year, one of our students got her associate's degree. Now, that's the exception. That's really powerful. But there's no reason that literally almost every kid gets a couple of classes under their belt while they're in high school. That is not unreasonable. And that is a good experience for a student from the high school level, and I will tell you from a parental level, it's nice on the checkbook. So it's a win-win across the board. Program investments, as we think ahead, we really want to continue to expand WAVM. It's, it's a, you know, it is an amazing program. It is special to Maynard. It's a chapter seventy-four. It's a licensed radio station. Most high schools do not have that. They have some watered-down version of cable television. This is a full-blown program, and we want to continue to grow it. We also want to grow our engineering and computer science. We have some really great teachers that are doing that. And if you have the opportunity to visit their classes, exciting stuff is happening in there. I love visiting their classes. And can we, we need to work on building a pathway around them. And then finally, another area that, as small as we are, we rock. Maynard is phenomenal in the performing arts, and that's an area that, that's one of the things that will keep a kid coming to school. They may not love coming to school for everything. They may love coming for band. And it isn't one or two kids. There's fifty of them in there, and they sound phenomenal. Can we expand that, articulate what a pathway might look like? Absolutely. Might it require adding music theory or music composition? It will. But I think that's part of, as we look forward, what do we want to do to keep kids in Maynard? And that's one of the, one of the things we want to do. Keep them here because we're good. We're better than good. All right, Colleen. I don't know, I have to put a summary page there. It's that, well, this is our proposed FY twenty-three maintenance of effort budget. Again, just as a reminder, we've been cognizant of the town, our strategic plan, the Town Master Plan, and just to give the administrators and staff credit, they worked on this. They really fine-tuned the asks to what do we need to move forward, move our students forward, strengthen our programming, and do it in a way that's fiscally responsible. And that might actually be the last slide. All right, Colleen, you are an excellent slide operator. Wayne's clap, Wayne gets a big round of applause. I know I mentioned the, the principals and the staff. I also want to mention the entire central office because Wayne did the yeoman's work, but everybody in the central office, quite frankly, helped and they endured me practicing this with them and asking questions so that we could get to a place where it was as clear as possible. There's probably still room for improvement, but we did what we could do in the time we had, and we're proud of what we have to offer.
That was really great how you addressed so many different areas for improvement while still sticking within Greg's recommended amount. Like, you've covered a lot with that amount. Do we want to go around and do clarifying questions again?
Whatever you would like, man.
Okay, Elizabeth?
I, could you, I wish I understood the lunch and recess support more than I do. Could you just do, it's not, it's late. Maybe that's why I didn't quite get it. I don't exactly understand what they're doing. I get you're excited about it, and I want to be excited about it too. Can you just tell me what it is?
All right, I'll try and do it again.
Okay.
So it's a contractual piece, so that if teachers do recess duty, they get a second prep period because they're giving up some time. So what it does to a schedule is it means that there's a, a regular prep time when kids go to specials. But if teachers are now doing recess, then they get an additional time, which means now the kids go to specials again because the teachers get that time, which they're due. If however, other people are doing that recess duty, then the kids, in effect, don't need to go to a special a second time. They can be in class with that teacher, thus increasing the amount of instruction time without extending the day
Got it.
in any way.
Okay, so the teachers aren't losing a prep, they're just losing a duty, and now someone else is taking the duty. And so, okay, great, thanks. I get it.
Clarification, I like that. Thank you.
Um, can I ask about that? I know, I thought that a couple of years ago, when the teacher started doing lunch, it was because of concerns about bullying. Um, is that still a concern? Like, did that remedy the concern before, and now we're going to go back to having that, or?
So what I heard, so this is before my time, obviously, but what I heard was it was more of, I didn't hear the word bullying, quite frankly, I did. I did understand, my understanding is that there were some behavioral issues. And quite frankly, if a young, if a student knows that their teacher is there, you know, there's that relationship already. Our goal is to hire the same people who will be part-time but have the same adults there, train them, have them form the relation, a relationship with the students so that we don't go back down that road, which I don't think we have to, because I think the proposal is a common model in schools. It's incumbent upon us to do some training and make sure that that relationship between those adults and the students gets built so they see them as an advocate, as a responsible adult, and as an authority figure that they need to listen to.
Um, Lydia, do you have clarifying questions?
I do. I just have one. So I noticed that the SC budget is nineteen thousand. Can you explain to me what that covers? Because in the past, it, I don't think it's ever been above ten thousand. So
Look on my sheet here, hold on.
And I know that we struggled like between paying for conferences and whether or not we were going to subscribe to
There's, yeah, I can tell you, there's school committee dues. There are subscriptions, workshops.
Subscriptions?
Subscriptions. I don't, so I could go back to that line item. I, I have the spreadsheet, but it doesn't go down to each. And then contracted services. So I don't know if that was, and I can go back and look, I don't know. It doesn't go any deeper than that on the spreadsheet I'm looking at. So I'm not sure of contracted services. Wayne may know. I'll defer to him on something more specific.
And where do legal fees, are legal fees paid out of that, or are they just paid like for district and school committee paid out of the legal fee fund? Is there any discrimination between the two?
I had legal fees. I took those out. Legal fees associated with school committee and legal fees associated with Fed.
Okay, I didn't see that, but all right, I'll look.
They're, they're broken out separate on the pie chart. There have been other times that it has been lumped in with the school committee. As, as I instructed Brian, I wanted to just, to separate those out that, you know, unfortunately, that is a part of, you know, our operations, both the Fed Department and Superintendent's School Committee that needs the legal services, and I wanted to kind of call that out, kind of track that. So, so yeah, that would be different in terms of what was included in the school committee. So that, that's why that number might look a little different here.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is I know that they've been discussing at Green Meadow among the specialists, having them cover the recesses and lunches, and I was wondering if we could have Susan Arsalay just speak to that, if that's okay? Or just talk about what they've been considering or what they've been throwing around. I don't, I, I don't know that there's anything that has been solidified, but.
I can defer to Rob on that. I don't know that.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I spoke to Rob today. My team presented or recommended that perhaps we will cover recesses next year, saving the district money on hiring staff. Saving the district money on hiring staff that would only be there for two and a half, two hours. Um, and in addition, would give you more reliability in terms of coverage. A lot of times, some of the struggles we had were that people would not come in or would call in sick and we didn't have enough staff to cover recesses. The other benefit to that is that not only saving money for the district, but is that the students know us all. We see every student. Um, this year we see every student twice a day. That allows us to have a relationship with them that the recess lunch staff would not have. So I feel like it's a win-win for everybody. It would give us an extra thirty minutes in our day for curriculum planning, for grading, for organizing. For myself personally, I have a lot of artwork to organize, uh, to put up bulletin boards, to take down bulletin boards. Library has circulation issues. So all of those things benefit the district in my opinion. Um, I spoke with Rob briefly about it today and hopefully that's a good solution to the problem.
Thank you, Susan. Rob would like to be unmuted.
Wait, can I ask a question? How, again, how then would they get more time for prep? How is, how are they getting thirty minutes back if they're doing lunch duty? I don't get it.
Because then they'd only have one class a week. Right now they have two with, with the classes, with the grades.
This go through like an M O A process though? I mean, I'm guessing, no, is this just scheduling?
And I would let Rob sort of, if they just had the conversation today, they probably need to like really take it in and see, does it accomplish what we're trying to accomplish with schedule? If it does, that's great. Off the top of my head, I can't just, I don't see the schedule quite that quickly off the top of my head. If it works to accomplish the increase of instructional time at no cost, I think, wow, why wouldn't we do that? It just hasn't been on the table in the past. So I think it'll take the time to let Rob and his team work through if that's possible.
I, I have to, and Lydia, I have to really just percolate it. It was a, it was a conversation Susan and I had in passing very briefly today. And I appreciate the idea of them thinking out of the box, we'll say. Um, but I need to look at the schedule in general to take a look at everybody's responsibilities, everybody's duties and everything else before committing that that is going to be something that we can do for lunches for two hours a day. You know what I mean? Because that's two hours a day, again, that we have teachers doing other things and, and. So that's, that's the only thing is I, I appreciate again that Susan coming to me. We have a great relationship and them thinking this, hey, here's an opportunity for us to do something. But until I really look down dirty at the schedule and figure it all out, then it's not something I, I'd be willing to bring up. So in that manner, as far as budgetary goes, it's still a need for, for us, one way or another.
All right. No, that's great. I just, I was excited about the idea of it. And so I just, um, thought that it was worth mentioning. Just, I, I fully understand that it has not been fleshed out or even tested or whatnot. But I think I just, I would encourage you to pursue it.
We appreciate the collaboration.
Does, if, um, I love the idea of them having recess staff that know the kids already because that's my concern with the, this change altogether. But I'm wondering if, if, um, that wasn't pursued, would that mean cutting the salaries in the positions of all these specialists? Because they're going from twice a day to once a day?
Again, Hillary, for me, I have to take a look because what it does is it also allows us, the possibility is to expand specials maybe to fifty minutes instead of forty-five minutes. I mean, we have a lot of different options and we want to make sure that we're giving the kids acrimonial every opportunity, you know what I mean? So, you know, if I, if I just increased it by five minutes a class, that means that, that that increases their day by, you know, or whatever, by twenty-five or thirty minutes. So I mean, there's a lot of different things that we, possibilities we can do within the schedule. And, and so for those reasons, it's, it's, until I have a lot more information, be able to look at it and really put the schedule under a microscope, it's hard for me to answer any of those questions.
So I guess my question is more like yesterday, was the plan to cut those positions because the specials are going from twice a day to once a day? Or was the plan to keep those positions the same?
Keep them the same. There was no talk, I mean, reducing it. It was just when they would be meeting it for how long.
Okay. I don't quite understand that, but, um, Mary, do you have clarifying questions?
No, I, I just wanted to make a comment that Susan makes a really good point because that's why we went from part-time staff initially. Because, you know, they, they might not show up. It wasn't like the commitment and that's why they went to the teachers because there's a relationship and that. But, um, yeah, so that's, that's my concern with going backwards. But I'm hopeful that we can get good staff that if we pay them well enough that they will show up every day when they're supposed to. So.
Lydia?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate what Mary just said. It was at the time when the, the last year that we had lunch and recess monitors, I was also working at G M and I remember that was one of the main discussions out at recess was, well, I'm only getting paid such and such dollars a day. If I don't feel like showing up, you know, it's not going to make a difference to me. So, um, you know, and then, yeah, so that's the thing. And, and it's hard to like justify paying us like a lot of money for a position that's only two and a half hours a day. So, um, if we could keep it in-house, I think that that is, would really benefit everybody.
Natasha, are there clarifying questions?
I did. Thank you, Hillary. Um, so on the request, Brian, it's fifty, the literacy, it's fifty for each, it's a hundred thousand total, right, a program for Fowler and then a program for Green Meadow. Is that correct? And that's only for supplies and materials? That has nothing to do with staffing or consultants, a hundred thousand dollars for only materials?
Correct, because we have the staff.
Okay. Um, what, I guess, that's a lot of money for materials, I guess, with, where's the recommendation for that? Because we haven't had a literacy, obviously, um, presentation. And so I know that we, we were hoping to have one in, in the fall. I'm, I'm curious where the direction, the recommendation for these materials, where that's coming from? Is this from the literacy committee or is there a literacy expert or consulting? Because I know we talked about having a literacy consultant that would help with these efforts. Are they informing this, the material recommendation?
So that's our administration and some consultants from outside Maynard as well and our teachers. And they're using all the same resources that a consultant would use. Ed reports, curate, they're using the same databases, quite frankly, that an external consultant would look at. And they're also comparing them, us to surrounding towns and looking at what other, you know, what is Acton Boxborough doing? What is Sudbury doing? What is Hudson doing? What is Maynard doing? And one of the things we found out, um, and Rob can speak to this too, is that there wasn't one program. No town had one program that they completely used. There was a variety of programming and even from the experts that we talked to from other districts, they said, yeah, most places, for example, are using foundations. That's a very common, successful resource as part of a literacy program that districts use. And then a few, a couple, I want to say two, three years ago, districts that were maybe a little more in the know than us, I'm not sure, but they started to use integrity to improve phonemic awareness or phonics, one of the two. So then we said, oh, let's try that. So that's another piece to our literacy program. And then it's looking at, how do we do, how do we address fluency and comprehension? And there isn't one program that meets all of the needs. So it's a matter of continuing, so they've pilot, so they've piloted different programs and real pieces of programs to then take the best of what meets our needs.
So just to, um, you mentioned ed reports. I just want to, you know, I know this is something we, we've heard, but Botanist and Pennell was not recommended in ed reports. I just want to make sure that is being under consideration that the, the materials that we're talking about that would be used are ones that are systematic and research-based. I know you talk about foundations. I know that's part of the Wilson program. So I definitely, it, it, it is a very much vetted, um, program. But I just want to make sure that the materials that we are by, providing for literacy are ones that are systematic evidence, research-based materials.
Yep. And we'll do, the answer is yes, absolutely. And we, and I know that, because I've spoken to Rob and Karen and Mike, they're working on a presentation to, both to the parent community to involve parents in, this is where we're at. This is what our data shows. This is what we've looked at to bring them into the conversation first, as a first step. And then also to come to the school committee after that to say the same thing. We've included this and this is where we're at. So it'll be more clarity around what that specifically, that money gets specifically spent on.
Okay.
So this is F Y. To put into the budget.
So this is F Y twenty-three. So nothing right now is being spent on materials for this yet because this is F Y twenty-three, right? So we're going to have that time to hear more about it, um, to engage those stakeholders and whatnot. Because again, I just go back to, this came up in the, in the CPAC meeting the other day as, and I'm sure Jeff, you know, has informed you.
He did.
Yes.
He's a good guy with a powder puff shirt.
He did. Yeah. And I think it, it kind of fell a little bit because I know there's been some transition because Je- Jennifer was, you know, also kind of leading this charge when she was, or helping with that literacy committee in the school. But some of it feels a little bit, um, I guess we're removed from not getting the updates. We want to make sure that the funding, whatever our needs are, like the math is, I, you know, hearing about the math needs, um, or is that something that we would want to address in this F Y twenty-three budget? You know, and, and not at all. Okay.
We do, but we don't. There's only so much capacity and there's only so much resources. So right now we want to continue with the literacy pilot, include more people, share that out. So the only money that's being spent currently is to pilot things, which is short money in the big picture.
Okay. Um, a couple of other questions. The athletic director, I know that we had talked in the subcommittee that we, I guess the idea of pursuing, um, advertising would be one of the tasks we would envision for increasing for a one, a full F T E. Is that what we're committing to for this or no?
I, I don't necessarily think that that needs to be part of an athletic director's job. That may be some piece of, he may have some minor role in that. But he's really an athletic director.
So it's really, I guess I'm trying to understand then, um, we're saying that the capacity, because right now we spend about, what is it, ten, eleven thousand is the, so we're going to be adding about fifty K for full-time, just all approximate. Um, so that would be a separate, because the person who's doing that is, is a staff, right? So this is a stipend to that position they already do. So this would be essentially a posted position separately, a full-time F T E that would be new, right, that we would open up applicants and apply for as a new position like we would do when we increase any other position. Is that correct?
I'd look at the contract. I have no problem. I have no reason to think that the current athletic director wouldn't want to move into that as a full-time position.
But does that normally happen though? Like when you talked about the other jobs and you're adding like the P E teacher, you'd have to post it. It would be the similar kind of process, right? When you're changing it from a point two to a one full-time, it changes the, the role? And so it does get posted as a position?
Okay.
Oh, I was asking, is that, is that, would it be the same?
I think for the athletic director, I look at it a little bit differently because there's somebody who we have on staff who's doing the job. Who if he wanted to do it full-time, I don't know why we would go, just create more work for everybody. I would think we would be able to say, oh, you're doing that job. We're changing the, the structure of the job. And we would offer to him to do that if he wanted it.
Okay. Would there be a way to check that like there's no, um, like contractual reason to need to post it before? Yeah.
No, I'll check that.
Yeah, I just remember there was language in, in the contract about the athletic director. That's what kind of got me thinking about.
We can check it for sure. Absolutely. That's no problem.
So we're not saying that this person would be responsible for advertising, but in, in meetings, we've acknowledged that advertising probably is the best avenue to pursue to help with offsetting some field and maintenance and.
Yep, we have.
And so I'm guessing with these added positions, what capacity, what role, where do we find that would happen?
Great question and we haven't flushed that out yet.
Okay.
As I, truth be told, I don't know of any other athletic director who's involved in advertising.
We're Maynard. We don't have to, we're, we, all, we don't have to be like everybody else. We, we, I, I think comparing to other districts, I think that's one of the things we find that how unique we are in many ways. We are self-containing as well. We are one district. So I think that I would want to look at what is the need for Maynard. And if we're increasing an F, one full-time F T E, I would like to see that the, the duties include some type of effort in offsetting, reducing expenses in some other way, whether it's not advertising, but pursuit of maintaining the field. That, that would be to me, and, and, um, an objective for that role is not only the needs of athletic needs, but also for fields and how we can have our resources in a better place.
We can talk about that at some point. Sure. I, I, I think we can take that offline.
Okay. Um, the summer, the Saturday school, the summer, on the Sunday, um, is it ten thousand dollars? Can you elaborate a little bit more about, is it teacher? Is that materials?
No, straight salaries.
Okay. So that would be like stipends or whatever it would be for the summer. Okay. That's clarity on that. Um, and that would be something we would envision our current staff, like offering for our current staff to do, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I think that's it for now. Um, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Um, my questions might be kind of annoying. Um.
No such thing. Just bring it on. And we need to get a cup of coffee, but bring it on.
Okay. So I'm, I'm wondering if, um, for some of these things, like the twenty-five thousand-ish that may be saved going from, um, assistant superintendent to the curriculum director and the state, um, not having to pay the ten thousand dollar stipend for the athletic director position when that becomes the sixty thousand dollar position. And, um, if the P E teacher is though, um, actually like a point eight, um, as opposed to like a full co, like if the net cost is point eight as opposed to a full one point O, by any chance, does all those savings give you extra room to add other things into the budget? Or are those savings accounted for in this already?
That's a great question. And we have, and we've talked about that and what is why Wayne's laughing. Because we know realistically, that's kind of little money. Might it add up to something and be, you know, it could, quite frankly, I would probably let it add up to that little bit. So when Bob comes to me for facilities and says, we need a new oven, we have something to draw upon for the oven or for something like that. It, so yes, it does add up to something, a hundred percent.
All right. So maybe it could be thought about later for things like the curriculum materials that, um, Mike Barth was talking about for homework club or, um, extra professional development that the teachers request when they form their committee or something.
Sure.
There could be some little room there, a late bus. And then like other, oh, sorry.
No, I said, I promise you during the year, next year, Ryan can come to me and say, I want this program, make it happen. And since I can't print money, that's how I make it happen.
Okay.
Although if we can make it save up, add up to enough, I support the late bus concept.
Yeah.
I'll tell you now, it's a matter of if we can pull that together, I think that's a great use of money.
Um, I'd love that too. I'd love that too. I'm still confused about the the specials thing, but I could try to think about it some more and maybe ask you later.
Yep, and I think Rob just got new information that has not been part of our conversations up until twenty minutes ago, so.
And then the one that's probably going to be annoying is. So I know in the summer, before I was on the school committee, when I watched the meeting in June. School committee members were upset about, there was a lot of hesitancy to vote for the S R. Funding, knowing that it included the literacy pilot that included Fontes and Penel. And there was a lot of hesitancy to vote for it, wanting to make sure that they weren't voting to approve that. But it was sort of a deadline to get that approved to do the summer programming. I know that I think that the school committee still has a lot of reservations about. Putting money to a program that could become banned. In Massachusetts, like it has in other states and could become a waste of that money that has some. That people of color have said is racist, that, you know, there's some criticism of I'm not, you know, working for a large amount of kids. And I don't want to hold up. I know we have to move forward with our budget, and I really like so much of the budget. But it makes me a little bit hesitant that we're. Again, hesitant about that area and moving forward anyway because we have to. So I'm wondering if with the way the school committee, I know we're not voting today, we we're going to vote next week. But is there flexibility to say vote for the budget as a whole, but say we don't want to spend money? On a literacy program without a vote specifically to okay that? Or does it have to be an all or nothing, give the go ahead to buy whatever? The literacy committee chooses to buy.
I think so I can assure you, nobody is, I've heard no one say. We want to buy the Fontes and Penel program. Period. And that's all we want to do. That hasn't been part of the conversation. If I'm wrong, Rob should start waving and going like this. Get our attention. There are parts of Fontes and Penel that I've heard are okay and work the whole program. No, which is why. We go, so I would not recommend that the school committee start to piecemeal the budget. I think there needs to be some level of trust, and I think. When I'm buying anything in the next month. So within the next. I don't know, Rob, give me a timeframe here, months, six weeks, we'll be able to come. With a presentation to the community around the literacy pilot and then to the school committee. Before we're buying anything, so you're in the know before we're moving forward. This is just knowing that we need a literacy. Not program, but we need literacy resources to support our students in a literacy way.
Right, we'll be ready in in January for a presentation. But what people should understand is that the components of a very good. Comprehensive literacy program is Brian had noted earlier. When you're dealing with areas of phonics or anything like that, foundations costs money. And the programs that we've had in the past of foundations need, you need to improve them, you need to. Get enough for everybody that it hasn't been that way in the past. So that by itself is is, you know, foundations, just to do that phonics piece. Could be ten thousand dollars in order to make sure everybody in that school. Is on the same page, getting what they need for the kids and being able to. Phonemic awareness in the areas of hegemony and and those. That costs money to implement. You know, for the kids, areas of writing. That costs a certain amount of money in order to be able to do it and do it correctly. And the same thing with. Classroom libraries in order to be able to take a look and 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 do things like shared reading in in areas of. All of those, all of that in order to make a comprehensive. Literacy program and none of this in the area that I ever mentioned Fontes and Penel. I mentioned the idea of these are the pillars that we need in order to build. For all of our students, but each of those have a a financial aspect to them in order to do them for for all of our students.
Can I ask, can I ask a question or just actually for whenever that presentation comes out, if you can. Rob, include information about the Spanish immersion, you know.
Spanish immersion is is right on Natasha's. I'm glad you mentioned that. We have a program, Mike Barth was very business. Me vision for for ten years, you've had a fantastic Spanish immersion program, but much like Mike said earlier. They've been implemented on their own. They've been doing it on their own. Now we've actually have looked at a program called Me Vision, which is going to be. Phonics based and it's going to have phonetic awareness in it. And it's finally something that they have, but that program comes with every single year, a price tag in order to get. Workbooks and other things that kind of go with it. It's not a, it's not a one time. End of the, you know, forever and ever. It's you got to keep building on it.
Yeah, no, nothing that I didn't want you to have. But just from the presentation. To include that that angle as well, because I know that they've. That's been a sore sore need.
We need it, we know, yep.
Um, some more discussion type comments. Do we want to go back around and starting with Elizabeth?
I'm good for now.
Lydia?
I'm good for now.
Mary? Um, just two comments. I would reiterate about that late bus because Mike was so adamant that that would be beneficial. So if we can find money to, that's twenty thousand dollars is in the scheme of things is is small money. And my my question was, so we've got the summer program funding for the high school. And we all talked about how beneficial the summer program was for the lower grades, but there isn't any money in there set for that, Brian. Do we have anything set or would it be S R funds or?
For this year, we would look to use that, use S R funds to support that. But to your point, I think it's a good point. We would then, whether it's the year after, if whether it's FY twenty four, FY twenty five, look to build that into the budget.
Excellent, yeah, because I I see that as not just COVID related, but I think that could be really, would be really beneficial. You know, for going forward. That's my only two comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Along that, if we do summer programs again for younger kids, can we try to do them a lot earlier than last year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Natasha?
And also, if I could just follow up, we can, if we can put that plan in place, like come February, because you know how parents are all planning. We heard that loud and clear that it was just too late that they got the information. So if we could have a plan for that.
Yeah.
Knowing the weeks helps, like knowing the school's going to do something this week. Even if like the details aren't ironed out.
Yeah, I'm just making a note here.
Yeah, well, also the good part too, that even if it's not a full day, if we could have maybe a basic bridge, right? So a basic is operating because we didn't have a program over the summer. You know, that might also be another pathway to say, okay, we're doing, it's going to be a. Half year, but then maybe you can do a half day basic. Maybe there's some type of agreement that they can go there. Anyway, I didn't want to, but just some thoughts because I think that is crucial for families who are planning their summer. And then they pay so far in advance for other things. And then they miss out. Hillary, I I did want to actually say to Brian and Wayne. Thank you, I just for the the thoughtfulness in in all the budget planning. I really appreciate the presentation. The Tiger program, I didn't want all my comments to be boo hoo. I'm really excited about. The Tiger program expansion to Green Meadow and at the high school. You know, I advocated for, you know, something therapeutic or model or something to that effect at the lower school to help kids. And I think this year probably more than ever highlights how the the need is is growing more and more at all school levels, but. But certainly. That's where it starts to really. You know, sometimes, you know, there's just unknown diagnoses and, you know. Kids dysregulation, it's really, really hard. So I I'm excited to hear that and I I think to highlight what you mentioned earlier. And to emphasize, you know, you have to spend. A little upfront to gain more in the long run, and I think that's really crucial because. Out of school for, you know, tuition for one child can be eighty plus thousand. And that's one child where we're looking to expand and this could support multiple children. For for that. So I I do, I do applaud that effort and and also in thinking about what. Earlier, what Chuck said about attendance, which. As you know, school refusal, I remember at one point I went to a school council meeting. At at the high school and. That was something that was brought up when they were talking about a plan they were putting together about it was anxiety, you know, so a lot of those things that were. Kids, as they get older, the refusal piece is really rooted in sometimes their peer, that pressure, that perception. And they just just don't want to face it when they go into the high school. So I I really hope that this would be an opportunity. For some of those, you know, that again, that bridge where, you know, a child who can maybe address some of those. School. Am I hearing, am I anybody else hearing like TV or? Okay.
Yes, I don't know where it's coming from. It's not my office.
Okay. All right. But anyway, I just wanted to just highlight, I think that that's really great ads. And will serve our kids. Well, if we're able to get that implemented. So thank you. And, you know, I know more discussions come, I appreciate the thought around the literacy. I think it's. I have a little bit of PTSD probably from the the literate language based classroom discussions where there was a lot of. You know, parents anxiety about how, and there was a lot of unknowns. And it just felt like just information, and I know this predates you that, but there was a lot of concern in the community with parents of. Something that was not really obvious, there's no information, and so it was hard to kind of. Gain that reassurance of you're being very thoughtful in in the implementation. So I think. Once that information sharing, that presentation is is brought forward, I think that will be really helpful to kind of. Make, you know, just get more people on board with understanding. The mythologies that methodologies that will be, you know, going into place. And, you know, to to highlight what Jeff said the other night, you know. You you support, you know, you help. Everyone rises, right? The whole point is to get everyone. In a better place and I and I I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. So thank you.
Okay, uh, are we ready to move on to the school committee goals?
More than ready.
Okay, so.
To make a motion that we table. The goals discussion and go straight to executive session because this is, it's ten o'clock. And this is taking way too long.
Can we make?
Conversation, but.
Um, before, I just want to know. About. In terms of, I'm sorry. As far as Brian Superintendent report goes, I don't know, I don't feel like we can say without hearing what if he.
There's one thing I would just want to put out and which I don't need you to vote on tonight, but I want to put it out for you tonight, and I can do it in five minutes. That you could then vote on on the sixteenth next week, if that's okay.
I I was just saying table the goals discussion. I don't care if we do superintendent report or chair report or whatever.
Executive session, and I was worried about skipping this.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 sorry. I I didn't mean it like that. I meant like in terms of our next business.
I have a question. Do you think will it really take that long to do that goal discussion?
Yeah, I do, because one of us wasn't at the workshop. And tends to have considerable input and questions.
Well, I think that because it's after ten, I'm I'm good with.
This is an FYI, because I'm sure that's what you're referring to. So I was there a little bit. I left. And actually, I'm fine with the goals as they are written. So just to clarify. If that helps inform the conversation, I actually have no comments to add or change with what was presented in the.
Yeah, I was I was just asking because it would be nice to have it. Just have any questions now so that we can get it done for the next meeting and then if it is going to be quick, then maybe we.
How they are if we want to do that.
Yeah, I am too.
It's not on the agenda to vote on the goals.
It's on the agenda.
Right, but just we want to have a discussion, yeah.
Because we had said that we were going to discuss things one meeting and vote on them the next meeting. Um, do we need to read them to to, if we wanted to vote on them next meeting, would we need to read them? Out loud today for it to like count as the first time, or can we just say if everybody seems good with them, we're good to vote on them next week and put them on the agenda for next week?
That's fine.
Okay, um, so then superintendent's report, or do we have to address that Lydia made a motion?
She didn't make a motion. It wasn't seconded.
Okay.
Wait, is it is it clear that everybody's okay to? With as are written and then we can vote on them next time. That's clear that everybody is okay for voting on them next time.
That's why I made a motion to table them.
No, I'm saying, well. I I thought that that we were going to discuss them now very quickly, and then next time we were going to vote on them. So my question is. As everyone just said, said out loud that they don't need to discuss them, we can just go ahead and vote on them.
I think we just discussed them. Agenda, agenda item happened.
Yeah.
And next meeting, we can vote on them.
Elizabeth, that's just because it doesn't say vote on the agenda. And we said we would not vote on things the first time it's put on the agenda.
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is. So maybe we don't have to table the discussion for next time. And then vote the time after. This is the discussion, and now we can go ahead and just do we plan, just vote on it next time, right?
That's what I thought we were going to do, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. So superintendent's report.
So I will, in the spirit of time, the only piece which I need, want to. Need to discuss with you would be the case capital plan, which I apologize that went into the folder very late, but it didn't. Actually come to attention until late Friday and then the information rolled in early this week from. The executive director of case. It doesn't impact us financially in any way, shape or form as a member of case. All the superintendents of the supporting districts make up their board. There are certain things that the school committees of those sending districts need to vote on, so. They've done what cases done well, there's a little bit of that, there's surplus money. They would like to set up a capital fund and maintain a capital fund. And to allow them to do, yes.
Brian, we have the information in the folder. We should have all read it by now. I would like to make a motion that we approve the establishment of a capital reserve account and approve. Case collaborative twenty twenty two capital plan.
I don't mind if you wait until next week. I just need us to, so we have a board meeting just in full disclosure on the twentieth. So my hope was to bring it to you tonight for review, give you time to process it. Next week.
And if we have questions, we'll just send them directly to you.
Fine.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't have questions.
But my one question is, is there anything we need to, I read what you have, and there's anything that we need to know?
No.
There's no impact on our budget, there's nothing.
Actually, it may save us money depending because it may allow the case to not raise tuitions.
Yeah.
Minimally, but it's a good thing for us.
Bryant, would you, would you be able to clarify that part like in just a quick, because I, that was the part, I saw a lot of dollars and I wasn't sure like. What our bottom line impact would be as far as. So I saw the presentation, just if that's something that might might be able to be.
So there wasn't at this point, because it hasn't been established and they don't have actually any money in an account because it doesn't exist. They were just, so the presentation just explains that that potentially could be. So it's probably a couple of years out. So there's enough money in there to actually save sending districts money.
One of my questions is, and I'll send it to you, but right now they've got a surplus of one point five million dollars. That's not pocket change, and I'm just wondering why we didn't, we don't get that back at the end of each year, but. Anyway, I'll I'll save my questions because I had a few questions, actually.
I appreciate that. Back to you, manager.
Okay, I don't have anything that used to be done this week for our chairs report. I can save it for next week. So subcommittee reports, Mary, do you have anything?
Well, do, let's just, I mean, nothing dramatic. We've had, there's been a lot of meetings, let's put it that way, but yeah, nothing.
Natasha, do you have anything that needs to be done tonight?
No, just that the budget, the charter review met yesterday and and that's ongoing. And CPAC met. With Jeff that there is, just as an awareness, everyone. There is Jessica O'Toole announced that she will be. Stepping down at some point. So there will be a change in the in the board. So that's probably the more pressing matter there.
Hillary.
Yeah, Hillary, oh, I'm sorry, did it, I'm done.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to say Elizabeth, but I, I don't know.
No, been here. Um, no, nothing, again, as Mary said, nothing dramatic. We did have our subcommittee meetings, the, the EI one and, and the strategy one, but. We can talk about that another time.
Um, Lydia?
Uh, nothing other than subcommittee, uh, the personnel subcommittee met and, uh, Brian spoke with MESA this week and negotiations will begin shortly.
Um, for these warrants, um, are there, can we do them, um, all together or would any have to come out?
I do have one that I will be abstaining from, um, and that one is two, two, oh, one, two.
Okay.
So maybe the other thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, you can.
Okay, so can I say, um, without objection, um, move to accept twenty-two, oh, one, three, oh, one, four and oh, one, five? Okay, and then, um, roll call vote to accept, um, twenty-two, oh, one, two?
Motion and get them, get a motion and second.
Okay, someone want to motion, make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept warrant, uh, twenty-two, oh, one, two.
A second?
Um, Lydia?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Me, yes, and then Natasha?
I'm staying.
Okay. Um, and then do we do, um, do we do a roll call vote to go to executive session?
We have to read the language on the agenda.
Yeah.
What the reason is that, um, and then, and then, yes, we would enter via roll call.
Okay, um, uh, executive session under MGL chapter thirty A, twenty-one A three. To discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation with the Maynard Education Association. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the paraprofessional union. MESA and open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares. The school committee will not return to open session. Um, okay, uh, do I have to say anything or I just go around to do the roll call?
Go around, roll.
Okay, Lydia?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Hillary, yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, thanks. Good night.